I call the meeting to order, if you would, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, take our minds and think through them. Take our lips and speak through them. Take our hearts and set them on fire with the desire to do your will.
All right, before we begin tonight, we have several changes to the original agenda. Item three C has been deleted. Item four B, the business spotlight, unfortunately, he's unable to be here, so that is deleted. Item seven B, funding for the burn building, that has been added. And item ten B, under information, treasurer's report has been added. One last thing I'd like to remind everybody is that, of course, the public hearing tonight is not here, it is at TAC, so if you show back here, you'll be lonely. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Move to approve as modified.
Okay, a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries five oh. Consent agenda, could I get a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries five zero. And we move to the public appearances, first one would be the employee of the month.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, our two-year employee of the month joined our Orange County team and hit the ground running. In just under one year, he has become known for his exemplary efforts on new projects and dedicated service to our citizens. He was nominated for the employee of the month by his supervisor and his peers. With a strong grasp of state planning and zoning law and an excellent sense of planning principles, he immediately exemplified a willingness to learn. He has become familiar with diverse processes in his department, including permitting and rezoning. This employee has recently demonstrated an eagerness in working with other departments to establish a sustainable in-house GIS program, a much-needed addition to his department's efforts. Most notably, the nominee has participated in the Route Three area initiative, proving to be a core member of the staff team. He has also been instrumental in producing quality comprehensive plan maps with minimal graphic resources. Not only is this employee an excellent fit within his department, but with the interdepartmental colleagues, appointed elected officials, and the citizens and property owners of Orange County. It is with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to our board the employee of the month, Josh Frederick.
Do you want to go?
I'll have to press, I just uh... Thanks, uh, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
The next would be the proclamation and recognition of Red Rib- Ribbon Week in Orange County. Say that best.
All right, so I should read this then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, by virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby declare the week of October twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, through October thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, as National Rib Ribbon Week in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in this nation are reaching epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible and unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas young Marines do the Drug Demand Reduction Program sponsored by the Marine Corps League, membership is for youth aged eight to eighteen for completion of high school, and young Marine models realize that Marine Corps values, honor, courage, and commitment, by focusing on teaching youth to live a drug-free lifestyle and teach ideals such as leadership, teamwork, and discipline. And whereas the LCTO, I don't know what it's supposed to be said, Caleb John Powers, young Marines participate in and promote the National Rib Ribbon Campaign, and whereas the National Rib Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Rib Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during National Rib Ribbon Week, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth demonstrate their commitment to healthy drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, now therefore be proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby declare October twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, through October thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, as National Rib Ribbon Week in Orange, Virginia. And be it further proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Supervisors encourages all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Rib Ribbon Week, but all year long, making a visible statement to be strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle.
Mr. Chairman, we do have several members down in here in the audience that are here to receive the proclamation.
Okay. I have three, I assume you gentlemen will be the three. Come on up here, we'll have to get a photo. One for you, sir. One for you, sir. And one for you. One more. We'll get in here, we'll get a picture. Thank you. Appreciate you very much.
Do we get these pictures we take back to these people?
I think someone would have to say a few words as well.
Okay. One more. If you want to go to the podiums or if I can hear you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Young Marine Corporal Dev Patel, and I am here this evening on behalf of Lance Corporal Caleb Powers, Young Marines Unit. Our unit greatly appreciates this proclamation you have given us. Your support helps us spread the importance of drug demand reduction during Rib Ribbon Week. One of the most important parts of the Young Marine program is drug demand reduction. All year, we have classes on drug and alcohol abuse and how to stay drug-free. But Rib Ribbon Week is when we use that knowledge to educate others. Last year, we reached over fifteen thousand people during Rib Ribbon Week. This year, we plan to double that number and spread the word to thirty thousand people. We also wish to earn the Enrique Camarena Award, which is awarded to the Young Marine unit which reaches the most people and the unit that makes the biggest impact. This award is in memory of Enrique Camarena, who was a DEA agent in the nineteen eighties. He was tortured and murdered in Mexico in nineteen eighty-five, and his death inspired millions of people to lead a drug-free life. Camarena's family and friends started Rib Ribbon Week in his honor, and very soon, the entire United States was honoring Camarena and recognizing Rib Ribbon Week. The Young Marines celebrate his commitment to this effort with an annual award. We wish to honor his memory and reach out to the most people. We will be spreading the word in many ways. On November second, we will be participating in the Family Fun Day at the Spotsylvania Town Center, and our unit will be speaking at a number of schools. This year, we are leaving everything up to our Young Marines. They will be responsible for spreading the word in their daily lives. This proclamation shows the county's support of our cause. We appreciate your help, and we hope that the County of Orange will support us in the many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, next is the Resolution of Appreciation for the Organizers and Property Owners of the Twenty-Thirteen Liberty Ride.
Okay. Ah, whereas Orange County Parks and Recreation recently held their second annual Liberty Ride on September twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, and whereas the Liberty Ride was approximately a twenty-mile horseback ride from Oakland Heights Farm to Montpelier, in fact, as part of James Madison Mont- Montpelier Annual Constitution Day Celebration. And whereas the sponsors of the event were Deanne Marshall, Marshall Farms, Oakland Heights Farm, and the Parks and Recreation Foundation. And whereas the Liberty Ride had forty participants, forty horses, and included riders such as Delegate Ed Scott and Supervisor Jim Moynihan. And whereas the Orange County Board of Supervisors would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to local landowners, David Sally Lamb, Darren Estes, Mrs. E.R. Calvin, Wayne Vera Pretty, Randolph Thompson, Monk Sanford, Eugene Brooking, for the use of their property and making sure that safety was the number-one priority of this event. Now therefore being resolved, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby extend its appreciation and admiration to the Orange County Parks and Recreation Foundation, the sponsors, local landowners, and the many volunteers for their outstanding work and involvement in making the second annual Liberty Ride a jubilant and successful event.
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Sir, thank you. All right. I have a collection of others.
We'll mail those to the people that couldn't come.
All right, one is, we'll get a picture. All right, thank y'all. Appreciate it. Where you at? Do you need me to take those and get them to the other people?
We can mail them, or if you'd like to, that'd be great too.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, while you're returning, if I might make a couple of comments. The, uh, two, two key ingredients of making this a success. One of them is a young man that just sat down there. David puts a lot of time along with other volunteers in organizing this and, and seeing that all of the little details are taken care of, because when you put forty, or fifty, or seventy people on a horse and head out through the woods, there's, there are a lot of things that can happen. And so, attention to detail is, is really critical. And David's time and expertise in making that work out is something that is irreplaceable. The second part is part of the recognition here is that the fact that people will allow passage through their land. That's a big deal. That doesn't happen everywhere. This ride couldn't happen without that. And I think taking the steps that we've done to at least thank them is a, is an important thing. And I just wanna thank David and all of the volunteers again, but particularly the landowners who have graciously let us, without toll, use their property. Thanks, Dave.
It's a great thing. I hope we can keep it going. We're looking forward to the third. All right, uh, next then we do the introduction of Governor's School Legacy Project, Seth Winkler.
I would like to start by saying thank you for having me today and hearing what I have to say. My name is Seth Winkler, and I'm a senior at Orange County High School. I'm also involved in Governor's School. Governor's School requires that seniors, senior individuals complete a senior project involving both internship and community service. The project requires individuals leave behind a lasting legacy from their work. I've always been interested in math and problem solving, so for my project, I decided to focus on engineering, specifically how engineering is implemented in historic restorations. For my senior internship, I'm entering at UVA with the Supervisor of Historic Restorations, Mark McGee, shadowing him as a supervisor in this field. Mr. McGee is involved with many restorations occurring at UVA, specifically the restoration of the Rotunda. The Rotunda renovation includes extensive infrastructure upgrades and exterior repairs. The building's aging infrastructure, including plumbing, electrical, audiovisual, heating and air conditioning, fire protection, will be upgraded. Portions of the building may be adapted to follow, to allow for classroom use. The current total estimated cost is fifty point six million dollars. With historic restorations being the theme of my project, I seek community service in the field. I settled on the historic Orange County Courthouse. I decided to focus on the courthouse because it has withstood the test of time, built prior to the Civil War. The courthouse has, courthouse has been mostly restored, but the clock atop the courthouse has not. I myself cannot restore the clock, but as my legacy, I would like to see it be restored. I intend to do what I can to have the clock restored, doing fundraisers, raising public awareness, and even assisting in the work that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing it tick.
You have any questions or anything else?
Di- Didn't we have funds set aside at one point in time to take care of that?
We got a quote, and we looked at doing a more extensive renovation of the courthouse. And at that time, we put the funds that we had set aside for the clock on hold. And I suppose with Mr. Winkler's, um, nudge, we've refocused on that effort. And Kurt is gonna give him a tour inside the clock tower, and we're gonna get that going. There won't be, um, I don't believe we have the entire amount for the funds, so there will be some work to do as far as fundraising, but we look forward to the clock starting.
That'd be good. You'll, you'll enjoy it up top. It's really cool up there.
What, what is your timeframe? What, I mean, is this a project you, over months or year or what?
Well, I'm a senior, so it ends at the school year, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to get it restored by then, but I just want the lasting legacy to have the clock restored and make sure it continues to work and work in order, so. However long that takes, basically.
What will entail is some work on the clock to get it to start again. And then, once a week, we'll have to, um, line the clock.
You have to go move the bucket of rocks. That is the counterweight, a bucket of rocks.
So we, um, we'll train staff to continue on, but once we get it restored, we'll be able to keep it going.
Well, good. I, I wish you a lot of luck with that.
Thank you.
I think that's a great project.
Thank you.
Wear beat-up clothes when you go up there.
Yeah, it's, it's very dirty.
Well, y'all were to take us up in there and tell all of us saw what you had to do, and we were like, okay, well, that's nice. So you can tell us about your trip up the steps.
Well, it's more the latter. But, uh, no, it's, it's, the, if you look at the intricacy of the, of the actual mechanism, it is really neat. Uh, but the bucket of rocks is cool.
When you go up there, videotape it. No, for real, videotape it, when you go up there, and do a little, do a little video.
That'll help, that'll help with fundraising too.
With your, with your fun. You really might.
Yeah, well, because it's one of those things nobody, I mean...
We could then put it on our website and, um, do like fundraising and make awareness of it and...
We can definitely put a link to the website.
That'd be great. That'd be great. We keep giving you, we keep, we keep giving you all these ideas. We've just extended your...
You're like, you're like, I just wanted to raise a little bit of money. You have me making a video now. Ooh, it might, you never know. You might be a sensation on YouTube.
The clock man.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth. I appreciate it. Okay, uh, that being done, next is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir, Mr. Dan.
Okay, in that case, we will close public comment. Board comment.
I sort of jumped the gun on you there, but I wanted to do it while David was standing. Sorry. You got mine.
Oh, okay.
I, I have one comment. The jail had some difficulty with their contract for renovation, and they'll be probably redoing it, so. The, the award was challenged, and so, uh, we've had some legal advice to probably go ahead with redoing it.
New RFP. Okay. Anything else? All right. Uh, we'll move on then to the action items. First one, the amendment to personnel policies. Mr. Lashley.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, an issue came up a few weeks ago. We have an employee that has joined the Army Reserves, and he took an issue with our fact that our, we have no pay for military leave, but we do pay for civil leave for jury duty. And that's probably not in compliance with, with the law. Basically, the law says you gotta, if you, you can't treat military leave any differently than you treat other leave. So, uh, met with the county administrator, and we drafted an amended leave policy that would pay for military leave. The way it works with jury civil leave now, if you have jury duty, we pay you, but then you give us the whatever it is you get paid for jury duty. And so, we've come up with the same plan for military leave, that the county would pay you for your military leave, but then you have to reimburse the county whatever you're getting from the government, so that you aren't getting a double windfall. So this, this is just to try and bring our civil leave. I mean, the other alternative is to just don't pay people for jury duty and just leave the military leave policy. But in, in our meetings, we felt like this was probably the better approach to take. So if anybody has any questions.
The, the difference between the hundred and twenty hour and the hundred and sixty is it still adds up to three weeks apiece?
Yeah, that, that math was actually done for us by the VA, the Veterans Administration did that math, and so we just use their math.
Okay. I guess I, I had a question that, almost on the same point Lee just raised. Are we going to apply that, um, to, to all employees? Or, or is, is there an eligibility question, uh, with respect to their participation in either, uh, the reserves or National Guard or something? It wasn't clear to me how that gets applied. Is it across the board? Is that the intent, or?
Well, if you look at the provisions you have under the military leave, you have active duty. If somebody goes on active duty, they basically take a leave of absence. Where this kicks in is somebody that's going on reserve duty, where they're just gone one weekend, a month, or whatever. And so, if you look at subsection B, reserve duty.
Right.
An employee is eligible if they're in any reserve component of the Armed Forces or the National Guard. So if they, any of the Armed Forces or National Guard reserves, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, or the, I guess Coast Guard.
And, and it would be only those employees that would accrue the hundred and twenty or the hundred and sixty hours?
Right. You're, you're obligated by law to give them fifteen days of leave, but it can be unpaid and has been unpaid in Orange up to this point. And so, all this is, is the accrual process, and, and basically, we were accruing everybody the same. So whether you were twenty-four or eight-hour shifts, you accrued it the same, so we made that adjustment. And then, we made it paid leave with just the same as civil leave, that you just reimburse what you're getting.
And practical, I would suspect you just pay them the difference.
Well, and, and probably that's how the math will, it's gonna be easier for everybody to just do that. I don't know how it works on civil. A lot of times, I think they just sign the check over to you, 'cause it's easier. But on the military leave, it's gonna be more money, so, a little different. And theoretically, some people may make more on their military leave than they get from the county, in which case, there's no math transaction.
They don't have to reimburse us?
Exactly. Can if they want.
I doubt it. Okay. I, uh, I will move to approve this change in the policy.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries five zero. Uh, second then, funding for the bun, burn building renovations, John Hartness.
Good evening, members of the board. About every five years, the Department of Fire Programs hires a structural engineer to come in and do a structural analysis of our burn building. Our burn building is used by other people besides just the Orange County. We do receive funds from fire programs for the maintenance and repairs of the burn building. So again, that's why fire programs is involved. Through their, um, analysis, they recommended that we stop burning in the building until we go ahead and make some repairs to the building. One thing we do have to do is hire our own structural engineer to go ahead and design the repairs and basically walk us through the process. This was done about five years ago. Same thing happened. We had to hire an engineer, we made the repairs. This is hopefully gonna be all grant refundable. But in order to go ahead and apply for the grant for the repairs, we have to hire an engineer. So we have to upfront that money and hope that we're approved for the repair grant. All indications are, with our talks with fire programs, we should be successful. But, um, you know, there's always a chance we won't. But, um, what we're asking for is to take the fifteen thousand five hundred other contingency funds to go ahead and hire that structural engineer to go ahead, so we can start the process, so we can submit the grant by January first. And again, we feel with pretty good certainty that we will be successful recovering this one.
And if we're not, we're just out the engineering money, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if we were to take this from contingency, over three hundred thousand dollars would remain, just over three hundred thousand, but two hundred thousand one ninety-eight point forty-eight would remain. And the reimbursement, in theory, if, if we were awarded the grant, would come before the end of the fiscal year. So we would anticipate taking it out of contingency and then placing it back in contingency.
Okay, um, one, excuse me a second. One thing I would ask that we do, since this is reoccurring every five years, is that we need to somehow place something in, in the system so that we know five years from now, we need to actually put fifteen thousand in your budget, rather than pulling it from contingency.
Right.
Well, do you expect to have to do a refurbishment every five years?
I suspect the way these buildings are designed, there's gonna be a certain amount of maintenance that's gonna be, need to be done every, um, every five years. And actually, during this process, because of the number of burns, at about the three-year mark, we're gonna have to get an engineer to come in and do, um, another analysis. But I think some of this also, we have to work with the Fire Chiefs Association. This is essentially their building, we're working with them on it. But, um, we most certainly can plan, especially if we know three years from now that we need to do, there's certain requirements. Um, we certainly can plan for that.
What are, what are some of the things that need to be done?
Um, in these burn buildings, what we have are thermal panels, because when we burn in these buildings, it's in specific locations. And to protect the building, there's thermal blankets and there's thermal panels. And, um, those panels obviously take a beating, and what happens is, over a period of time, they begin to warp and disfigure. And essentially, what we have to do is pull down a, a certain percentage of those panels, replace them. But this is also a masonry building, so there's finite cracks in the concrete. Water getting in those cracks during the winter months causes, you know, the cracks to get bigger. Again, if you were to see these cracks, I mean, they're very, very minute cracks. But because of what this building's used for, because of the cost of replacement, it's in our best interest to go ahead and make those necessary repairs. Because if you were to see the cracks, you would be surprised. But, that being said, we built our burn building for, I think in the sixty, seventy thousand dollar range. If we were to have to replace it today, you're talking about a five hundred thousand dollar building because of the change in requirements. So, a little bit of maintenance is gonna make that thing last. We're gonna be, meet the standards. Our people are gonna be safe.
Well, not, not only do we, you get the water and a little bit of cracks, then we fire it up.
Right. Well, it's the heat and the cooling, it just, so again, if you take care of those cracks, you're just gonna prolong the life of the building.
Yeah.
Do that with any concrete. I will move that we approve the funds fifteen thousand five hundred from contingency to, uh, fund the necessary engineering.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, uh, appointments to boards and commissions, committees. I see we have several people that have been contacted that are interested in serving in positions.
I, I actually have one, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jones has agreed to serve most of another term on the Lake Anna Advisory Committee.
Okay.
I would move to, uh, reappoint Mary Lou McFarland to the Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services Board.
Can you pull that up? I'm having computer difficulties over here now.
Most of the time. So Ray Jones for Lake Advisory Committee, Lake Anna Advisory Committee.
Lake Anna, Lake Anna Advisory, right.
And then Mary Lou McFarland for Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services Board.
Yeah, I would have had the, the four people interested in the RRCSB, the Youth Commission. Any others? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's taken care of. Discussion items, we have none. Any question on the information items? Uh, anything on the committee reports? Okay, then we go to calendar. Uh, schedule a public hearing for budget amendment. Carrie Ford on November thirteenth. That work for everybody? Okay. And the amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding accessory apartments also on the thirteenth. And then the last is the joint work session with the board regarding the high school master planning on Tuesday, December third.
Mr. Chairman, I was, um, reached out to by Dr. Grimace who found the, um, last meeting we had with the school board to be very beneficial. And they spoke to him about proposing that we have another one-hour work session, five o'clock, similar to what we did before with the schools, so that they can give an update on the high school master planning.
Okay. All works for me. Well, if there's no issue, then let it be. Uh, and with that, if there's nothing else, we would recess for dinner, which means, of course, we'll go into closed meetings.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters: consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body; and consultation with legal counsel employed to retain by public body regarding specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to two point two thirty-seven eleven eighty-seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of the four said matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Oh, aye.
Mrs. Barris?
Uh.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
All right. Being said, we are now in recess until seven o'clock for the public hearings at the TAC. Call the meeting to order. Uh, at this point in time, we are set to have two public hearings. Uh, first one will be on the propane. The second one will be on the comprehensive plan. Uh, few ground rules. You have three minutes to speak. We have a little monitor that will ding at two minutes to give you a warning and then ding again at three minutes and I ask that you stop speaking because with the crowd here, we'll be here late. Um, also request no clapping, no cheering, uh, other forms of disrespect or, uh, applause. So anyway, with that, we will begin the first one. If I can have Mr. Zodi or Josh?
For Josh.
Okay.
So our first public hearing this evening is for S U P thirteen dash thirty-three. Discount propane services. As applied for special use permit to install a propane gas tank storage facility, that's on Julian Lane in Locust Grove. Tax map number fifty, parcel five. That property is just under thirty acres in size. It's general industrial I two. And it's about a mile south of the intersection with Mine Run Road. There is an existing special use permit, uh, number oh-three dash oh-eight, uh, for another propane gas tank for, storage facility, uh, under separate ownership that's in current operation. The Planning Commission heard this at their September fifth meeting. And they did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the special use permit. And along with that were three conditions, if I can get back to them. The first being that there will be no freestanding sign permitted for the site and or use. And that's in order to maintain consistency with the existing site. The second one was that land clearing activity shall not occur beyond what is reasonable to install the site as shown on the submitted site plan. And the third one on behalf of the Soil and Water Conservation District is that the existing stormwater detention pond will be inspected by the county to ensure that it is properly maintained. And with that being said, um, I understand the board might have some questions for Chief Harkness. He's with us this evening to answer any questions or I can do as so much as well.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay. Yes, for Chief Harkness.
Very good. I figured they'd all be for him anyway.
Thank you, Josh.
Good evening. You saw the letter that we received, uh, in terms of, uh, comments about the, uh, about the safety aspects of this, correct?
Yes, I did.
Uh, could you comment on some of those issues?
Yes. Um, what I'd like to do is just briefly go over some of the same information that I provide to the, um, Planning Commission and hopefully that will answer most of your questions and then be prepared to answer any follow-up. The first thing I want to do is address training. Uh, that was one of the concerns voiced during firefighter one training with the majority of the volunteer fire departments in Orange County. That is a minimum requirement in order to ride, um, a fire apparatus. From two thousand and eight to present, hazardous materials operations is part of that training. Hazardous materials operation teaches you how to respond, recognize hazardous materials incidents. Part of that training also goes into gas type emergencies, um, such as LP, natural gas, how to control leaks, how to control fires. Additional training through firefighter two, again, does the same thing. At our burn, uh, facility, our training facility, we actually have an LP simulator so that the firefighters can train on how to fight fires, um, regarding, um, LP facilities. The other thing is our, our firefighters have combustible gas meters and are trained how to use them. That's one of the ways that when responding to an emergency, we make decisions based on those meter readings, you know. Do we need to evacuate certain areas or is this, I hate to say the word non-issue, is it less hazardous or is this extremely hazardous? Also, in, in the first due, um, area, the, the fire chief is getting ready to retire. The, the regional hazmat team, he's been involved with, uh, the majority of his career in the Fredericksburg Fire Department. Another member from the Mine Run Volunteer Fire Department works for, uh, one of the pipeline companies that, uh, where they pipe natural gas through the county. As far as water supply goes, it's very possible to develop flows of five hundred gallons a minute, um, doing a tanker shuttle. And, um, I know they talked about being able to prove or demonstrate that capability. The last big fire in Orange County was, um, I believe the Glengarry Fire, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. They were flowing five hundred gallons a minute there for quite a length of time. Um, we would be relying on our mutual aid partners if we needed to, um, sustain a tanker shuttle for that location. But I, I also think we need to address that if there was a big enough fire where we're starting to cool tanks and, and things of that nature, we'd be evacuating people, whether that was in the mine run area or right down the bottom of the hill here in the town of Orange. When we look at, um, you know, kind of the ways, when we look at hazards and base our decisions, one, we look at the hazard. And what is the hazard here? It's propane. How we determine the hazards associated with propane? And what we do is we look at its physical characteristics. What's its flammable range? What's its vapor density? And what that means, is it heavier, lighter than air? Its expansion ratio, because when that, if liquid propane was released, it does expand, uh, in its, in its ignition temperature. And just to compare it to something that you're familiar with, you know, liquid propane has a flammable range of two point one to nine point six. Gasoline, something we use every day, one point seven to seven point eight. What does that mean? It's a fairly narrow range, but it only takes one or two percent of vapors to have a, a flammable range. So again, very similar, similar in characteristics. Propane is one and a half times heavier than air. Gasoline, three to four times is heavier. Gasoline would create more of a hazard. Ignition temperature of propane, nine hundred and twenty versus four thirty to five hundred for gasoline. So again, that's looking at the hazard. Then we have to look at the risk. What is the risk? What, what is the probability of something happening at one of these propane facilities? And when you look at the statistics and the way these things are engineered, the risk is relatively low. There's very few fires. The most common type of event we'd probably respond to would be some sort of a leak and it would probably occur when we were either loading or offloading product. The way we mitigate or manage that risk is through a variety of ways. And one is NFPA, National Fire Protection Association Standard fifty-eight. And what that does is that regulates these LP facilities. That talks about how the tanks are designed, the piping's designed, the safety features that are in these facilities such, such as relief valves, such as excessive flow devices. So if a pipe or a hose did break during a loading or, um, unloading process, that excessive amount of, uh, flow through that valve would automatically shut it off. The cutoff valves, the cutoff valves are actually designed to be in the closed position. They're held open by a fusible link if there was some sort of a fire. That fusible link would obviously break, cutting off that valve. There's remote shut offs. So again, that's kind of what NFPA does as far as that tank design.
Have you done a fire safety analysis of what they've done based upon the, uh, the NFPA fifty-eight standard?
Are you talking about the, the fire risk analysis that's
Yeah.
that's, um, mentioned in the standard itself?
That's right.
That is actually the responsibility of the, um, propane company. That's not something that the, the fire departments.
Have they provided that to you?
I have not seen that. Um, again, going back to, to the facility itself, going back to that NFPA standard, as far as barriers, if you notice these facilities, there's, um, like guardrails or some, some sort of protection around the tanks so that will prevent vehicles from hitting. Um, the way the sites are maintained, they're usually gravel. So there's no vegetation. In other words, there's nothing inside the facility to burn except the vehicles that would come in to either unload or offload the product. As far as some actions that we would take as far as mitigating the risk to the public and, you know, we, the small chance, we did have a, um, incident in these facilities. We have our public notification system that if we did have to evacuate the area, we'd be using that, working with the Sheriff's Department. But again, because of the rural nature of this, uh, facility, there's a relatively few houses compared to the facility we have right at the bottom of the hill here in the town of Orange.
What are the, what are the hazard radiuses or what, what kind of, what kind of, uh, limits does the NFPA, uh, designate for, for this kind of quantity of, of propane?
When we go there, we use, um, a hazardous materials guide. And when you go to this, the hazardous materials guide, when you have a tank of that size, we do an evacuation of one mile. And again, when you look at a one-mile radius in a rural area versus a one-mile radius in, let's say, the town of Orange or in the town, I'm gonna use the example of, uh, Culpeper, right in the town. It's, uh, Southern States. They have two thirty-thousand gallon tanks sitting right there on, uh, Twenty-Nine Business.
Okay. You showed me one, uh, one diagram that showed, uh, the kind of distances that they would, that they would insist on if you had this, this tank.
Yeah. And just, you know, and again, in closing, is propane hazardous? No doubt, propane, there are hazards associated with propane. But it's a hazard that in my opinion, and if you look at the, the statistics out there, is a very well-managed hazard. We've managed that risk through the construction of, of the different, um, vessels that hold the materials, the way the piping, the, the safety features that are built into the system. And just in closing, as we walked in here tonight, we have a one thousand gallon LP tank right in front of the school. There's another two hundred and fifty gallon tank. At the bottom of the hill, we have a thirty thousand gallon LP tank at Tiger Fuel. At our industrial parks, we have ten and twenty thousand gallon LP tanks right up alongside of our, uh, facilities, whether it be the industrial park or some of the other businesses in the, in the fifteen area. If it was that great of a risk, our insurance companies wouldn't allow it, our building codes wouldn't allow it. And again.
So you're saying that this, uh, that this SUP is consistent with our building codes?
It's, it's gonna be, when it's installed, um, I'm sure our building official is gonna be making sure that they follow the NFPA code. And it, it's not only our building official, but all these companies are insured and they have standards that they have to meet to be able to keep their insurance. And that's all part of the, of the deal is having properly installed tanks, properly maintained safety equipment.
Would, would it be appropriate for you to review the fire, or the fire safety analysis or the risk analysis?
Could most certainly look at it.
Okay. Anyway, that's, that's all of my questions.
Okay. I had, just had one, Mr. Chairman. Um, looking at the fire safety analysis, uh, information that we've been given, I, I found it interesting that the standard calls for whatever the flow is, two or three hundred gallons a minute, four hundred gallons a minute, for a period of only ten minutes. Can you help me understand why ten minutes is enough or the standard?
I can't, I can't comment on the ten minute unless they're going under the premise that we're gonna cool the tanks initially and then evacuate the area. But, um, I, I don't know where the ten minutes came up with.
Using that calculation, the amount of water that's required is, is really quite small.
Minutes you would compare.
Yeah. I mean, for a thirty thousand gallon tank, you know, you're talking about two or three thousand gallons in total, i- if it was only for ten minutes.
What you have to remember, when you cool a tank, what you're doing is you're spraying water on it. As long as the water is staying on the tank and not immediately evaporating, you're obviously cooling it satisfactorily. Um, the other thing that we look at, if we were, if we're in a position that we needed to cool a tank, is that tank beginning to, the relief valve beginning to relieve? Because with these propane tanks, again, it's a, they call it a thirty thousand gallon tank, but it's, they're full at eighty percent of capacity. So again, it's a very cold liquid. And any fire is gonna be impinging on the bottom of the tank normally. It'd be very rare that we'd have a fire impinging on the top of the tank. So it's impinging on the bottom of the tank. It's like you, a coffee cup or a cup of water. Before you can melt through like a styrofoam cup, you have to heat the water up inside of that cup in order for that styrofoam to melt. So that, what that propane is doing, it's basically like a heat sink. It's absorbing heat. So it's gonna take a tremendously long period of time to penetrate a tank through the bottom because it, it's got to heat all that LP that's in the tank. As that gas is heating, it can, again, if the relief valve needs to relieve.
If those relief valves go to the, and then you have the possibility of the gas burning on top of the, there's a jet coming out of the top of the tank?
Yeah. And if, if that happened, that is not a, it's not a hazard. It, actually, you would like it to burn off.
It, it, it's interesting. One of the things I saw when I read, did a little bit of research on this, that the preponderance of the accidents, nearly all of them in the last twenty years have involved these twenty gallon things, uh, or a place that, that refills them, uh, which I found sort of interesting. But I guess it's just because there's, you have, instead of one big valve, you have dozens or hundreds of valves.
The fire in Florida that, um, was mentioned in the, the letter to you was actually an LP facility that dealt with filling the smaller LP tanks. And there were literally thousands of them, a totally different type facility than, uh, what's being proposed here.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Is the applicant here? No? Okay. All righty. Thank you, John. Okay. All that's before us. Do we have? Yeah. Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak for this one?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one speaker signed up.
Okay.
Howard Kierzewski, three zero three nine one, Kutharpen Road.
Thank you for this opportunity. Listening to the chief, I would get the impression that this isn't any big thing. And I'd have a hard time, from what I heard, imagining anything bigger than a twenty pound, not a twenty gallon. These are twenty-pound bottles, eight or ten gallons maybe, that we see on our picnic area. I haven't heard anybody say anything that this installation is talking about a hundred and eighty thousand gallons. There's already a hundred There's already 120,000 gallons installed. I have two problems with this application and the process. One is, we treat the application as if it were a thing among itself. It refers to another installation under separate ownership. That other installation is a 60,000-gallon tank for one owner, two 30,000-gallons of tank for the other owner. And this applicant is asking to put two more 30,000-gallon tanks. That's 180,000 gallons of this stuff that we're hearing isn't quite as benign as it sounds. My property is adjacent to here, yet my house is 1,000 feet away from these tanks. So I have an interest in how big the fireball could be, okay? I heard the chief, and we all have gotten this through various sources. They're going to evacuate everybody within a one-mile radius. If this is business as usual and 180,000 gallons potentially going up is business as usual, why are we bothering people over there 5,000 feet away? Another question, how come I'm the only one who got a letter? I get a registered letter from the board that says, hey, this is, something's going to happen. You're probably interested. There, according to the census figures for Orange County, there's probably 100 other houses in a one-mile radius. Maybe if they were notified, you'd hear from somebody except me that this looks kind of big. My question to you all is, under what circumstances does this quit being a little benign propane filling? The way we're hearing it, we're imagining you're taking your bottle and getting it filled. No, we're talking 60 tanker trucks a week. This applicant says he has three a day, plus two tanker trucks a week to fill his tanks back up. He doesn't mention the other two people there that have 60,000 gallons each. Well, let's do the arithmetic. That's three times that number, so that's nine trucks a day pulling propane out. Well, that's nine opportunities every single day to begin the process that we all say probably won't happen. How many tanker trucks a week? Six. 10,000-gallon tanker trucks coming up Tulane Mine Run Road. We can barely keep the trucks on the road at my intersection. They keep managing, they hit things. Now we're talking tanker trucks plus the, what they call the bobtail trucks. That's almost 60 a week. At what point, my question to you all is, at what point does this small operation out in the middle of nowhere turn into an industrial park? If we okay 180,000 gallons, does that mean we would go with 360,000 gallons? Or a half a million? In other words, when does it become a major installation? I'll bet you there's some statues somewhere that have to talk about that. I've lived in that house for 37 years. I've watched it go from a lumberyard, and we talked about it burning all the time. God, it stank up the place. But they never evacuated everybody in a one-mile radius every time the sod has caught fire. And now he's branching out into this business. Well, what do our regulations, what does common sense tell us? How much of this stuff can we put in one location before it becomes, I don't know what? You know, FEMA and a half a dozen government agencies tell you how to build it and run it. I've seen the refineries in New Jersey and East Chicago, Illinois. When do we transition from a rural, well, industrial? He's within 50 feet of my customers that come pick peaches in my orchard. So not only, that's not mine. Not only do we have the public coming up and down Mine Run Road, but we have them picking fruit on my farm. So this is not agricultural cows watching the tanks.
That was the time limit.
Okay. How about one last question? We get outside auditors. I appreciate the chief, I appreciate you all. Together, couldn't we get outside the state fire marshal or, you know, I don't know who himself, to come down NFPA and assess how well we're able to have installations of this size? We say 30,000 gallons in Orange, this is 180,000 gallons. Thank you.
Okay, no other speakers?
No, three.
Close that public hearing. Okay.
Before we take a vote on this, I'd like to see the chief Harkness look at the fire safety analysis that was prepared.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable thing to do as well. I'd also like to better understand my question about the 10 minutes and a few other things like that, so. A little more work.
I think, quite frankly, the applicant should be here too. If you have questions of him, it's kind of hard to ask him a question if he's not here. So I would go along with Lee and Jim and defer this until the applicant can be present.
Well, if that's the case, someone want to make a motion then?
I don't think, do we need a motion?
I don't think we need, we don't need to table it or anything. We just don't take action, is it?
Well, if you wanted to appear on another agenda, you'd need to defer to another date.
Well, I guess we need to find out when the applicant can be here before we defer it to a date, or you set a date and tell him he has to be here. And then he doesn't show up again, so.
Some affirmative action ought to be taken to put it back on an agenda if you don't put it on one tonight.
Let's
I'd put it on the next one.
Put it on the next agenda and request that the applicant be here.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Frame?
Hi.
Mrs. Abbs?
Hi.
Mr. White?
Hi.
Mr. Goodwin?
Hi.
5-0.
Okay. All right, move on to the second public hearing. Mr. Zodi?
Good evening. I wanted to really preface tonight's public hearing with just a few notes I took regarding the comprehensive plan process. And I have about 12 items just to briefly cover, and hopefully I'll keep it short, given our audience. Initially, the comprehensive plan revision began in 2010. It has been a PC discussion item on approximately 28 public agendas since the summer of 2010. Third, numerous versions of the revision have been publicly discussed and publicly edited in this timeframe. The Planning Commission held two public hearings in 2013. Those dates were May 2nd and August 1st, and one public information meeting on October 20, in October 2012, as well several joint board and planning commission meetings where it's an agenda discussion item. The Planning Commission responded to public comment at the first public hearing and made changes to the plan. After several edits, staff brought the plan to public hearing on August 1st, 2013, where the Planning Commission, per public comment, forwarded the draft to the board supervisors for consideration by a vote of four to one. Land use designations were changed. One of the key things of this plan, land use designations were changed from agricultural, conservation, agricultural, residential, mixed use, and economic development to the following. Agricultural 1, A1, agricultural 2, which is A2, village, town suburban residential, and economic development. A few matters that I wanted to set forth to you all. The economic development designation along the north side of Route 3 replaced the mixed use designation in the current plan. So yes, it has been expanded. More to the point, the band identified, currently identified as economic development, this area covers less ground to the west than the current plan's designation of mixed use and economic development combined. And the reason for this little slight reduction is the fact that staff added the A1 designation in the Germanic Colony area. Another point, furthermore, the small area south of Route 3 along Route 20, south of Route 3 along Route 20, excuse me, contains private property that at one time was discussed for use in the future for realignment purposes of Route 20 and Route 3. Although at this time, there are no specific plans to pursue this. Regarding the A2, a defining line from the comprehensive plan is the following. In the future, land in the A2 area is intended to retain the residential, rural residential lifestyle and contain the characteristics of our small neighborhoods and farming communities. The plan for these areas is based on a modest increase in the number of similar or compatible mixed uses, preferably adjacent to existing residential or commercial developments, in essence infilling. Care should be taken to assure that development in the A2 area does not negatively impact the land located in the A1 areas of the county or conflict with the county's vision and stated principles in this plan. Another point is the transportation section of the comprehensive plan recommends, reflects multiple recommendations. One of them is the Orange County Six-Year Improvement Plan. Another one are several sources cited that brought forth by VDOT. One of those is the Phase 1, Phase 2 of the Route 20 corridor study. And another source that we included in the plan is the Rapidan, Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission's Rural, Rural Regional Long Range Transportation Plan. And so we have that mix of components in there. I would suggest, just for the sake of clarity to the public, that we might want to change the title of that table on, I believe it's page 37, to reflect something that says something other than Orange County proposed transportation improvements. We might want to put some, for just, you know, transportation items for consideration in the future. I think that would help clarify things because so far, we only have the Six-Year Improvement Plan on the books. Another item is the town suburban designation is actually significantly smaller than the current plan, which, when I say the current plan, I'm referring to the 2009 residential designation. Now, there are two primary reasons for this reduction. There's the Annandale that we recently, the planning staff, planning commission, and the board all worked together, and we changed that to agricultural, conservation agricultural. They downzoned the tag, and then we went future land use. I suggested doing a comprehensive plan amendment to agricultural conservation. The Andrusia was rezoned, I believe, as 2009, 2010. And staff also changed that in this comprehensive plan version, so it would be in the A1 district. We cut back some of the residential growth as proposed for areas west of the town and north of the town to reflect the A1, which is what I consider to be similar to the conservation, agricultural conservation designation. Route 15 has long been identified as an economic development area, given the current land use patterns, zoning, and availability of water and sewer to municipalities. And staff had, and I want to point out something, that staff has incorporated language that specifically calls for the protection of the Everona limestone spur. We had a citizen who's came to my office several times and made that point quite clear. And I respect this person's opinion, and I think it's worthy of inclusion in this comprehensive plan because we do need to protect our natural resources. Lastly, staff is working on development standards to reflect our desire, from a staff perspective, on sustainable land use planning to minimize detrimental impacts on the environment and adjacent land use. So I hope I kept that under three minutes.
We weren't timing you.
I was timing myself, I just had to still talk. So thank you.
I think you wanted to keep it under three minutes.
All right, thank you, Greg. Okay, that being said, open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
I gather we have a speaker or two.
We do. Prior to introducing the first speaker, I just want to enter into the public record that 34 various letters and emails were received from county residents that will be entered into the permanent record.
Okay.
We do have 55 speakers signed up to speak at this time. The first speaker being Nancy Wiley, 16104 Montebello Road. And she will be followed by Serena Wiley, 16066 Montebello Road.
Hello, my name is Nancy Wiley, and I live at 16104 Montebello Road. Can someone please tell me what happened in this whole comprehensive plan revision process? For the last go-round, I remember receiving a survey and attending community meetings before any revision was made to the plan. It was the same in the 1990 and 1999 revisions, which both sought public input at the beginning. With this plan, the people have been cut out altogether. Oh, sure, we were allowed to ask questions about an already-written plan an hour before a public hearing. And Mr. Brooks did note, we can speak at the end of planning commission meetings. But that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the concerted and conscientious effort on your part to seek the will, thoughts, and ideas of the people you serve before you go about changing up the comprehensive plan. Mr. Goodwin is chairman, and Mr. White is board liaison. Were you not complicit in this? Surely you could have steered the planning commission in a different direction had you objected to their process. I spent some time looking around at what some other counties do, and I'm telling you, Mr. Chairman and Orange citizens, we are being gypped. Tazewell County conducted surveys, held interviews, held neighborhood and public meetings before they wrote their plan. Rockingham County held 14 public meetings, wrote a partial draft, then held six more meetings and wrote the rest. Halifax County held meetings in each of their planning areas with a total of 35 meetings before writing the plan. I'm not saying we need to have 35 meetings. One or two would have been a nice gesture. The list of what other counties do is long and just makes me wonder, how come they asked their opinions in the beginning and we weren't? I'm not going to thank you for letting me speak tonight because you have to by law. Technically, you don't have to ask citizen input before revising a comprehensive plan. But my question and concern is this, why wouldn't you want to? Mr. Goodwin, Mr. White, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Frames, Ms. Abbs, you all took an oath of office that you would faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office to the best of your ability. You have not been faithful to the people in this plan. You have not been impartial, for you have sought only your own counsel. And this plan does not represent the best of your ability. I'm asking you to put aside your own agendas tonight and vote down this plan until you seek public input in a proper and meaningful way and before you attempt to make any revisions to our 2009 plan. Mr. Chairman, I would also ask that you have read into the public hearing the emails Mr. Zodi received regarding this comprehensive plan. Thank you.
I ask that you refrain. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening. My name is Serena Wiley. I live at 16066 Montebello Road in Orange. I'm asking that you vote down this plan because you never sought public input before you made your revisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. Next.
Next speaker is Pat Deech, 21161 La Horre Road, and will be followed by Carl Prover from Harborsville, Virginia.
Hi, my name's Pat Deech. I've lived here for 23 years. I hope I will live here until I die, maybe not today. But from what I've heard of the comprehensive plan, it sounds like it's encouraging a lot more development, and I worry about that. It sounds like it's going to open up land that's now designated as agricultural to residential and commercial use. And I don't think this is a good idea. I've seen what's happened in Fredericksburg, in Spotsylvania, and in Culpeper as the developers have swooped in as soon as an opening was made for them and turned farm and woodland into townhouses, condos, McMansions, and strip malls, and it ain't pretty. Now, I grew up on a farm and saw my hometown change as urban sprawl moved in. High-density development drove the price of land sky-high and with it the taxes. Farmers were driven out, the land was paved over, and my cute little town became a sea of buildings, roads, and cars. Now, I don't go back there anymore because it's really depressing. Changing the comprehensive plan to encourage more development will not lower taxes, it will raise them. It will increase traffic, increase crime, put more stress on our water systems, our schools, fire and rescue, and law enforcement. Now, do we need jobs in Orange? Yes. But we already have buildings in commercial land that have been abandoned by businesses that have left Orange. They're already zoned and developed for commercial, and they're lying there fallow. So why don't we direct some of our new businesses into those areas before considering opening agricultural land to development? And since much of the business we now have comes to us through tourists, maybe it's not a good idea to put a four-lane highway in the middle of a battlefield. Now, the bottom line is, once our farmland and forests are gone, they're gone forever. So please don't adopt the changes to the comprehensive plan, at least not without more feedback on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please refrain.
My name is Carl Prover of Harborsville, Virginia, and I do not support this comprehensive plan as written for the following reasons. Neither I nor the citizens of Orange County were allowed to help draft this plan. I'm sure the Planning Commission and supervisors will argue that we were given an opportunity to contribute. However, their three-minute allowance of input during their planning meetings, most of which they chose to ignore, does not constitute my input into this plan. I am opposed to this plan as it was authored by those who conveniently stand to benefit economically from their redesignation of land categories. I was at the final Planning Commission hearing and personally witnessed twenty-four Orange County citizens speak out against this plan. Only one citizen got up and spoke in favor of it. And then I witnessed the travesty of the Planning Commission voting four to one to set it up, send it up to the supervisors to vote for their plan. To those who authored this plan and to the Planning Commission who worked on this plan, I'm disappointed in you for not listening to your constituents. I'm saddened that you put your interests above theirs. So, what do I recommend? I recommend we go back to the previous plan, the 2009 plan, that had people's input, and use that as our submission, and then we allow, or we allow the citizens of Orange County to help come up with an acceptable plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tracy Griggs, 15246 Double Top Lane, and will be followed by Bill Speedon, speaking on behalf of Farm Bureau.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Griggs, and I'm here tonight to express my strong opposition to the current draft comprehensive plan for Orange County. Specifically, I am opposed to new land use designations such as A2, new town suburban, potential economic development, and village. These designations that can be developed in an ad hoc manner without having to adhere to any sustainable or architectural standards will not maintain the rural character of this county, nor will they improve the quality of life for all residents as the vision states. However, I will concede that it might improve the quality of life for those few people who own land in these newly-designated areas. The drastically expanded economic development along Route Three is currently home to more than seventeen hundred approved, yet unbuilt lots, vacant homes for sale, and plenty of commercial zoning that eliminates this need for growth. With the water resources at maximum capacity and other infrastructure inadequate to support such development, who would want to buy and develop land that can't support commercial residential use? Also, if you haven't sold the land and homes currently available, why would you add more to the inventory? This plan puts Orange County up for sale for the lowest bidder. The problem with our economic development is not that there's not enough land available. It is that the problem rests with inadequate infrastructure, such as water supplies and industrial strength broadband that will hopefully attract the businesses that we would like. But this plan provides scant detail on such endeavors to attract decent economic development. If residents like Orange County as it is now, and the lack of flight attest to that, then why does the plan represent such a drastic departure from the current plan that enjoys broad support? Perhaps it was because this plan was drafted in seclusion by a select group that was written specifically to benefit that select group. Open it up to the community and get it right. We deserve the best. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Speedon, speaking on behalf of Farm Bureau.
Are you all earning your keep tonight? Bill Speedon, 1204 Blue Hill Drive. I'm representing the Orange County Farm Bureau tonight as the Legislative Director. This is a group of over fourteen hundred citizens, and the resolutions that I'm going to read, talk about, was passed not only by our Board of Directors but also at the annual membership meeting with unanimous vote. These are the Farm Bureau positions. Whereas the Orange County Planning Commission has passed a suggested plan onto the supervisors' public hearing, whereas the PC did insert some water protections and strip development protections on Farm Bureau recommendations, whereas the board inclusion of residential communities was not addressed as per public hearing input. Whereas the Orange County Farm Bureau supports the village concept as appropriate for the county as a planning tool, its time has come, but whereas many acres in the village maps do not fit within the village definition as per the comprehensive plan document, resolve suggested changes to the following to the plan. Objective B in Page Thirteen under sustain and enhance agricultural uses. Implementing means should include the transfer of development rights, agriculture districts, and conservation easements where appropriate. These were in previous plans, and it's difficult for us to understand why it's taken out of this plan. Objective E, Page Seventeen, promote tourism. Implementing means should also include maintain land use tax on qualifying acreage to help maintain the atmosphere of agritourism and groundwater protection. discourage strip developments along all highways and byways except for the village category is appropriate and in place. Residential communities within A2 zones should have their own rural residential zone. On Page Twenty-four in the definition, we need either rural residential or agricultural residential zone as in previous comprehensive plan and ordinances. All conservation easement land adjacent to like agricultural land use should be A1 throughout the county. Villages and their future land use map should only include land that is consistent with the village definitions. I reference Page Twenty-four on the definitions and Page Seventy on land use map. Thirty-five acres in Harborsville, for example, has three houses on, is included in the village. Now, five acres of this next to the Route Thirty-three and the railroad track is logical to be in the village site, but twenty-five to thirty acres do not fit in the village definition as you describe in, on the definitions. And other village properties throughout the county need the proper scrutiny, and non-conforming acreage removed from village. Thank you very much. Now, I will continue as a citizen, because I have another three minutes because I'm the next speaker.
Good move, Hill.
You don't think he's lived this long being stupid, do you?
How long did he sit on the Planning Commission and listen to people yelling? You want my address again? No, sir.
Now, I'm speaking as concerned citizen. As some of you know, I served eight years in the Copper Puss Water Conservation Board representing Orange County. I've lived on the Rapidan River for seventy-seven years now. I've always been concerned on our level of foresight on our water use in the county. The Planning Commission was made aware of the Everona Limestone Spur, which has been previously referenced. It runs under Gordonsville up to Route Fifteen around Orange and ends where the Everona Battlefield farms are. If I were king for a day, I would protect this narrow, several hundred yards to half-mile-wide water source with an overlay district and spell it out in the comprehensive plan. Secondly, we have recently observed huge gaps in political and financial ethics in both our national and state-level governments. This comprehensive plan is the first in Orange County to come from the Board of Supervisors down to the public. How many citizens of Orange County have been consulted outside of the public hearings? Being a small county, most people are aware that three of the five supervisors own large tracts of land directly affected by this plan. In an effort to blunt any public misconceptions about our local political integrity, I would hope that you would listen to the concerns of your citizenry and incorporate their input into the plan before passing it. Let's keep the integrity bar high in Orange County government. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
The next speaker is John Bangs, 22140 Monrovia Road.
Good evening. The proposed comp plan, this proposed comp plan has been touted as a good plan, but in my mind, that's not good enough. The citizens of Orange County deserve a superb plan. In fact, I believe the current plan addresses the county needs, land use needs, much better than the one that is now being proposed. It has taken the Planning Commission and the planning staff two-plus years to develop this proposed plan, and we, the citizens, get only three minutes to provide our point of view, which is not near enough time to address the many issues in this document. So, I'm not even going to try. But I will address the vision statement, and if time allows, make some general comments. The vision statements sustain the rural character of Orange County while enhancing and improving the quality of life for all its citizens. This implies that this document will protect and enhance current residents' quality of life. Well, I'm afraid it does just the opposite for me. I see it as increasing congestion, crime, pollution, and taxes. It does this by opening the door to development throughout the county except in the ag conservation areas. I believe it will lead to a very short period of time to unrestricted growth, not only in the Route Three corridor, but eventually down Route Twenty and between Routes Three and Fifteen, but also the A2 districts, and also in the A2 districts. However, I do believe the document will certainly enhance and improve the quality of life of the fortunate few large property owners along Routes Three and Twenty and the developers of the aforementioned properties. Not long ago, the 2004 citizen survey was used to justify activity along Route Three. This document was part of the recent comprehensive plan and the last survey of its type done by the county. I wonder, how does this proposed plan meet the wishes of the participants of the survey? Question six of the survey asks participants to rate twenty-six issues facing the county as either very important, moderately important, or important. Ranking the score based on citizens' input, I'm going to read a couple of the titles. Protect the water quality and water resources. Keep taxes affordable.
That would be your time, John.
Preserve forested land, and preserve natural resources and open space, and manage growth.
Thank you, John.
Additionally, as I understand...
Your time is up, John.
It's done?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought I got two warnings.
No, one warning with one, one with one minute, and then the final one.
I thought one at two minutes and one at one.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Next speaker is Mark Coombs. He's representing the Civil War Trust.
Good evening. I am Mark Coombs. I'm with the Civil War Trust. I know the time is short, but I'm going to fit as much into three minutes as I can, so apologies in advance for my quick pace. I think my, the complete comments are coming around, and I will certainly send a email copy to the board for reference later on this evening. So, thank you in advance for your indulgence, and to all the members of the board and everyone here for giving so much of your time to what is an often lengthy but extremely important In recent years, the Civil War Trust has had the privilege of partnering with the county and others on the Wilderness Battlefield Gateway Study. This productive joint effort was designed to encourage new and innovative thinking about land use in eastern Orange County. Now, as the county moves to finalize and update a draft of its comprehensive plan, we encourage the board to ensure that this guiding document more congruously reflects a consensus detailed in the Gateway Study's Phase Two report published last November. The most recent draft of the comp plan includes references to the Gateway Study in Chapters Three and Four, alluding on Page Twenty-eight to a potential Route Three small area plan. The draft document credits the Gateway Study for having identified certain development features that can serve as a framework for such a plan, and then provides a list of specific examples. In addition, the same page sets forth a standard for development stemming directly from the contextually sensitive ethic at the core of the Gateway Effort. The Trust applauds the county for taking the significant step of featuring the Gateway Study within its comp plan in a positive and prominent manner befitting the fruitful and collaborative nature of the study process itself. In keeping with this approach, however, we believe that corresponding portions of the plan can and should be further enhanced to better comport with the study consensus. Currently, Pages Thirty-eight and Thirty-nine of the draft comp plan call for the realignment of the intersection of Route Three and Route Twenty, in addition to the widening of Route Twenty to four lanes through the Wilderness Battlefield. Neither proposal is consistent with the findings or spirit of the Gateway Study. Indeed, both would result in negative and lasting impacts to one of Orange County's most visited historic sites. While the Study's Phase Two report acknowledged an eminently reasonable desire for continued discussion and investigation regarding potential improvements to the intersection as well as to each of these two roads, such talks were to be balanced by the intent to limit disturbance to the scenic and cultural resources of the Wilderness Battlefield. Accordingly, the Trust urges the county to remove this parent proposals from the comp plan in favor of continuing to work hand-in-hand with relevant experts to reach agreement on less invasive solutions to transportation challenges in the sensitive area. Moreover, though the Trust is supportive of the county's desire to cultivate the Route Three corridor in a manner of facilitating conservation and recreation that will enhance the visual integrity of the Gateway and channel-compatible growth as outlined in the Gateway Study, the seemingly sweeping designation of land in and near the portions of the battlefield along Route Three for economic development is concerning. For the goals of the Gateway Study to be realized successfully, they must be realized in tandem. Focusing primarily on development to the detriment of conservation will not foster the symbiotic relationship essential for both of these interconnected elements to prosper to the fullest extent possible. We recommend that great care be taken...
That would be your time, sir.
And additionally, thank you so much. An additional specificity applied in identifying... (laughter) Excuse me, I'm just finishing my sentence. I apologize. And identifying areas intended for economic development along Route Three and in the vicinity of the battlefield. Thank you so much, and I'll send my full comments later on. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine Brooks, PO Box 87, Montpelier Station.
Hello. My name's Catherine Brooks. I'm from 13611 Belvedere Drive of Montpelier Station, and I'm here to speak against the passage of the comprehensive plan for two primary reasons. First and foremost, the most basic logical step in developing the plan was ignored, one that is considered, quote, "best practices" in modern lingo, and that is the community outreach and input section. There is a great deal of important information to be gathered besides maps, demographics, statistics. It is acquired through community-specific meetings in different parts of the county: public meetings, large ones, small ones, surveys, workshops. In other words, finding out what your community thinks and establishing a dialogue from the get-go in advance of developing the comprehensive plan. Second, the proposed comprehensive plan here is not a tool that I believe will be useful in making good decisions for Orange County. It's too vague and broad to do anything but leave the Planning Commission and your board to reinvent the rules with each application. I have two examples of what I mean. The A2 designation is a catch-all completely mislabeled as ag. There's barely a mention of ag in the description. There's no guidance as to how to protect and preserve the, quote, "large undeveloped tracts surrounded by the neighborhoods which are mentioned." There's no discussion of buffers, lot size, view shed protection, nor of the priority in supporting opportunities for families to continue farming on the lands in these areas. The second example would be the concept of a village, which is not well-defined in this plan. There's nothing but a notation of the four villages that are considered villages and four bullet points that constitute the description. It's about a third of a page. Here I have a, from another county, an excerpt of a comprehensive plan, and one of the four villages has ten pages of objectives, goals, policies that guide how to maintain a village identity in a rural community. It addresses community separations, buffers, natural boundaries, encourages lower-density development at the perimeter, and encourages lower-density ag uses and support uses. It's quite specific but broad enough to... It's quite specific but broad enough to be useful. I'm happy to share this with you, and there are plenty more good plans out there. If what you want is a living document that is useful for the landowners, residents, and businesses of Orange County, as well as yourselves, our elected officials, I would say, start over from the beginning with the communities you serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathryn.
Next speaker is Stephen Brooks, PO Box 87, Montpelier Station.
I've been sitting here for the last 10 or so speakers, and I will tell you that if I were sitting where you were sitting, I'd be pretty uncomfortable about now. And I hope you are.[645.69][645.69](laughter) I think you've put yourselves in a very uncomfortable position. I don't know why you've done it. I think everybody here is puzzled as to why you've done it. But you have taken a singular departure from the normal process in Orange County of developing a comprehensive plan. You have taken upon yourself, Mr. White, as liaison from the Board of Supervisors to the Planning Commission, to insert yourself into the process of writing the plan, to further an agenda of development which both you and Mr. Goodwin have been very public in endorsing. Now, you're entitled to have an opinion. You know, absolutely, I'm for it, and it may be different than mine, and I respect it. But to use your position of power to influence this document, which is a document for the entire community, without seeking public comment, is irresponsible. It even borders on the arrogant, gentlemen, and I think you're going to hear that tonight. And I hope it makes you very, very uncomfortable. We have seen Mr. Zody, who I think has also been a party to this, say in the paper, for the record, that the mood of the county has shifted clearly, and that he is following that mood, that political shift. That's an inappropriate thing for somebody who's running a planning department to say. Planning departments should be objective, professional, should adhere to the highest standards of independence, and shouldn't bend and shouldn't admit to bending to pressure from above in the political process. I've also heard the council, I'm not here to make friends this evening, you can see that, I've also heard from council that this plan should be as vague as possible. I listened to him at a public hearing, telling him that he wanted to have as much room for discretion, you know, hopefully without being litigated against when the ad hoc decisions which will inevitably follow come down. That's also not the role of a council to a supervisor's board. I think my favorite comment of all, you know, after I heard, the overwhelming reaction has been negative, you all know that, and you've been impatient about it, and again, your public remarks. Come on, we've had enough talking, let's move on. Mr. Brooks said, "Oh, it's not a good plan, but, you know, we can't please everybody all the time." That is, shows contempt, honestly, for the community, for the citizens' voices. And my favorite line of all was Donald Brooks's line, which is, I think I'll end my comments with, "It's just a plan."[800.32][800.32](laughter) Come on, guys. You can do better.
Thank you, Stephen.
Next speaker is Allison Sappington, 12505 Albano Road.
Greetings, members of the Board of Supervisors. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am Allison Sappington. I'm from Barbersville, Virginia. The comprehensive plan has multiple problems. You've heard many tonight, too many for me to itemize tonight, so I'll focus on two issues most meaningful to me. Number one, a sustainable water supply for this area, and number two, our democratic process. First, I've spent 27 years of my career working in water resources. I'm therefore interested to know if all of you have given serious consideration to how this dramatic increase in development potential fits with the county's long-range water supply plan. Have you considered how future generations will pay for the water and the infrastructure that will be necessary to support the build-out of this plan? Second, and probably the most important issue, is that of our democratic process. Understandably, the development and revision of a comprehensive plan can be contentious and divisive. Yet in the end, after all the debates and discussions about what is best for our county, the one thing that is most important and can actually heal divisions and rifts among county citizens is knowing that the democratic process is being respected and obeyed in our county government. That being said, and in an effort to provide maximum citizen appreciation of the process, including those citizens who may not get their wishes, I look forward to, and strongly suggest that, any board members who will stand to gain financial benefit from the effects of this plan do the right thing and voluntarily abstain from this vote in order to avoid any semblance of conflict of interest. This action, regardless of the outcome of the remaining votes, would demonstrate the highest levels of leadership, selflessness, and integrity of this process. I can assure the board that there will be at least one Orange County resident who will remain proud of his county and his heritage, and his name is James Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Next speaker is John Jasky, 20019 Spring Hill Lane.
My name's John Jasky. I live in Rapidan. There are so many problems, as the other speakers have said, with the comprehensive plan that it's hard to, hard in three minutes to go through them. The A-2 designation, which will cover a huge portion of the county, is hodgepodge planning at best. It's going to have residential, commercial, and agricultural mixed together, and will be very bad for the county in many ways, including increased taxes. Secondly, anybody who thinks that it's a good idea to spend tens of millions of dollars to four-lane Route 20, I think is just totally wrong. There is no protection for the so-called Everona Aquifer, and it is a key to the future of this county. But I think, as other speakers have said, the most overriding problem with it is that this plan is an embarrassment. It was done undemocratically, and when I listen to people like Nancy Wiley compare to how it was done in other counties, and I hear Bill Speedon talk about how it was done since we did comprehensive plans with citizen input, and now suddenly we're doing it exactly the opposite way, I think it's undemocratic, and it's embarrassing, and I think you all should be embarrassed in the process.
Next speaker is Ed Harvey, 10078 Jackson Town Road.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm just basically going to address A-2. I think that is the biggest hodgepodge that's ever been put forth, and it gives too many options for special requests to be honored. So I totally oppose this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Henry Lee Carter, 11536 Rapidan Road.
My name's Henry Carter, and I live on Rapidan Road in the town of Orange. You all may want to turn off your applause meters. And I say to all of you, where were you when this plan was being formulated by the Planning Commission? Were you there?[1137.65][1137.65](applause) The fact that this was not a democratic plan was their fault. I was at many of these meetings, and in some cases was able to ask the Planning Commission about certain things, and they changed their plan accordingly, not in any major way. But what I would like to point out also is, I don't see the rush of industry to Orange County. We don't have high-speed fiber internet. Our congressman didn't seem to think that it was fit to put in that like other congressmen did in the rest of the state. And if, I would invite anybody to go up and look at the sprawl and the wild development that's occurring on Round Hill. That's only been there for 10 years, and not the first house or business has been built there, and there are no pending applications for building permits to do so. We are not faced with sprawl as has been indicated tonight. And I salute your integrity, and I know that you will vote in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
Next speaker is Robert Foster, 10812 Mill Ridge Lane.
I'm back speaking to you as a Spazovania County resident and citizen, not an Orange County citizen, but this has to do with your comprehensive plan. You've had seven versions at least since January. In almost every version in there, it has mentioned portions of the Wilderness Gateway Study, and I'm sorry, Mr. Person from the Civil War Trust, I don't share your love for that study. And it references, goes to, takes a special point to discuss a lake, a scenic lake formed by Wilderness Run and Shotgun Hill branch. That study never mentions anything about Spazovania County, even though the county line is down in the middle of that stream. Your latest comprehensive plan continues with a scenic lake formed by Wilderness Run and Shotgun Hill branch. I did a word search on your comprehensive plan. The word Spazovania is nowhere in there. Impoundment is nowhere in there except describing the Lake Keaton Dam. I've been here, talked, and I saw blue to tell you, at least be upfront and honest. Has anyone coordinated with Spazovania County since you're talking about impounding Spazovania County land?
Six-laning Route 3.
The answer is apparently no. That was six months ago that Spazovania County asked for coordination to the Planning Commissioner, Mr. Brooks. A month later, we got a letter from, or Spazovania County got a letter from Julie Sumbs, the county administrator, to Doug Burns, the Spazovania County administrator, saying, "It's too early yet. When is it going to be on time?" I would reiterate that Spazovania County has great concerns about a proposed impoundment of Wilderness Run, because they represent their citizens. Your joint retreat minutes list as an objective, "Plan THE water impoundment," not look to determine what's the best way to come up with whatever perceived water shortage you may have. No, you've already leaped to "plan THE water impoundment." That's similar to "fire, ready, aim." Does not appear to be an analysis that comes up with that. I reiterate, Wilderness Run is the county line between Spazovania and Orange County. My property goes out to the middle of Wilderness Run in the same place where you would want to impound and flood for a scenic lake and possibly future water supply. I have one other thing, and that would be, as a small businessman, I ought to be opening up a shop that sells torches and pitchforks, based on what I've heard tonight.[1439.01][1439.01](laughter)
Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Howard, 10813 Mill Ridge Lane.
Is there a more fundamental building block of American democracy than the concept of private property? And I stand today in personal defense of that right. I share a common property boundary with Orange County along Wilderness Run. I'm concerned with Orange County's draft comprehensive plan, which considers flooding a portion of my land by building an impoundment on Wilderness Run. This impoundment would require Orange County to exercise its power of eminent domain. The dam is mentioned in the 2013 Orange County Draft Comprehensive Plan and in the final report of the Wilderness Battlefield Gateway Study, and both of these documents propose economic development that includes a scenic lake formed by Wilderness Run. If this land, if this lake were to be built, approximately five acres of my property would be flooded, and another two acres would be inaccessible. That's amounts to a half of the property I own. And I want you to know, I object to this taking of my private property. No one wants their property to be condemned, and this is especially true when the condemnation is carried out, not for the purpose of public use, but for private gain. The Constitution of Virginia recognizes that private property is a fundamental right of its citizens. In fact, just this past November, the citizens of Virginia overwhelmingly approved an amendment to the Virginia Constitution to reinforce the fundamental right of private property. Article 1, Section 11 of the Virginia State Constitution says, "A taking or damaging of private property is not for public use if the primary use is for private gain, private benefit, private enterprise, increasing jobs, increasing tax revenue, or economic development." And your own comprehensive plan identifies the Wilderness Gateway area and this lake as economic development. You propose to create a demand for water where none exists, and then say, "We'd end an impoundment to meet the demand." Are there no other creeks to dam up in Orange County? Dam up one of those creeks and save yourselves a condemnation fight. And I'll close by adding to the list of challenges to this plan and to the creation of a lake on Wilderness Run, the following words from the Virginia State Constitution that condemn it. That would be Orange County, that would be you. Bears the burden of proving that the use is public without a presumption that it is.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bob Johnson, 830 Eastover Parkway, Locust Grove.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've been before you in the Walmart fight, and I was for development. I fought for Walmart to my detriment. People got mad at me. I will fight to get Route 20 extended to four lanes. I drove out here today, it's a very dangerous road. I love the Civil War and the Wilderness Battlefield, but we've got to move forward. However, when I looked at the plan, I did a search. Page 14 talks about protecting the water and not growing it. Page 32 talks about the Rapidan River. 1.6 million gallons per day are taken out, and 3.0 is allowed. We moved here about seven years ago, and during the drought, we had to stop using water in Lake of the Woods. The sewer is almost 100% used, and yet you want to add all these people and all these things. So what I ask you to do is to look at the 800-pound gorilla sitting on your desk, and that is water and sewer, and this plan doesn't address any of that. You heard the people that you're going to dam up their Wilderness Run. You think it was hard to get Walmart where it was? Well, you start talking to them about damming up their run. So if you take away nothing tonight, take away this. In the Bible, it says, "Build your house on sand, and it will wash away. Build your house on dirt, and it will wash away. Build your house on a rock, and it will stand." This is sand. It won't stand. For those of you who are a little bit younger, think of the three pigs and their houses that were blown down. Think of the Japanese emperor after Pearl Harbor who said, "I think we've awakened the sleeping giant." You have awakened the sleeping giant. I'm not as smart as the people before me, and I'm not going to be as eloquent as the people behind me, but you better not do this, because you've awakened the sleeping giant. Just look at the plan. I looked at the Wilderness Battlefield Gateway Study, and I thought it was such a folly it would go away, but here it is in your plan. $30 million to build an overpass over Route 3 onto Route 20, going from two lanes to four lanes to two lanes? That's just plain not right. Get rid of the Wilderness Study, and do your own work, and talk to the people, and grow the county like you should. You've done a pretty good job up to now. Get rid of this thing.
Thank you, Bob.
Next speaker is Kenzie Marable, 13121 Blue Ridge Turnpike.
My name is Kenzie Marable, Somerset, Virginia.
My name is Kenzie Marable, Somerset, Virginia. I'm opposed to the 2013 comprehensive plan. I want to read to you what maybe a lot of people here have forgotten, and hopefully it will not have to be revised, but this is how the first paragraph on the first page of the Orange County website reads. It says, "Home to quaint, friendly towns, natural scenic beauty, fine dining, distinctive shopping, and an unparalleled selection of first-class accommodations. Orange County, Virginia, has something for everyone. Visit Montpelier, the beautifully restored home of James Madison. Take a moment to reflect at a Civil War battlefield or museum, or enjoy an afternoon at one of Orange County's three award-winning wineries. Come, let us welcome you to Orange County, where serenity awaits, and a short drive will take you a world away." Thank you.
Thank you, Kenzie.
Next speaker is Greg May, 7209 Rapidan Road.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm Greg May from Rapidan. I'm here to oppose the proposed comprehensive plan for two reasons. First, the proposed plan, which obviously has engendered a lot of opposition, is going to take a long time to put into shape that is acceptable to your constituents. But second, you already have a plan that seems to enjoy pretty wide support in this county, and the law does not require you to change that plan. It merely requires you to review it. So it seems to me, based on what one hears in hearings and around the county, that we have a development plan that is reasonably widely accepted in the county. That's what we need, a development plan and not a developer's plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Next speaker is Peter Hugick, Gordonsville, Virginia.
I'm Peter Hugick and a resident of Gordonsville. Yesterday, I attended an Ag Business Council meeting that was hosted by Grellin Nursery. It was an impressive group of mostly local farmers and farm-related businesses, everyone from large traditional operations to the growing nursery trade and small vegetable farmers. These folks are smart and savvy farmers that have continued Orange County's rich farming heritage and enabled Orange County to stay competitive, which isn't a small feat, given the slim profit margins. They have done so by tracking trends and working smart. Other rural areas around the country are not so fortunate. There's been a broad-scale brain drain in many rural areas. That's what makes Orange County unique. Unfortunately, the proposed plan undermines farming and the related tourism sector. I think one of the most disappointing aspects of the proposed plan is it doesn't go far enough to factor in the thoughtful input that so many talented and engaged residents have provided. It opens our county up to sprawling residential and commercial development. We don't need to worry about attracting this kind of development. Virginia is growing and is projected to be one of the most populous states within the next 20 years. I submit that our plan should focus, continue directing new growth in existing growth areas, revitalizing our existing towns and their historic infrastructure, and focus on putting safeguards in place to conserve our land and water base. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dan Holmes, speaking on behalf of the PUC.
Good evening. My name is Dan Holmes. I'm here on behalf of the Piedmont Environmental Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I know many of you have listened to me over the last year and a half complain about certain like, aspects of this plan that I felt were lacking. I'm going to focus on, I don't think I can say anything better than what's been said before me, so I'm just, I'm a numbers guy, so I'm just going to start throwing out numbers, and I hope some of this starts to sink in on just how much growth we're talking about. The town of Gordonsville is approximately 590 acres, yet we've got it surrounded with 510 acres of proposed Town Suburban, and if you add in the economic development that stretches out 33 and up 15, that's another 334 acres, for a total of 844 acres surrounding a town of 590 acres. It took 250 years to get to that size. The town of Orange is roughly 2,100 acres. There has been a great reduction from this plan, this version draft, to, from some versions that came before it. At one point, Town Suburban actually equaled the size of the town. We've got that down to about 758 acres around the outskirts of the town. You add in the economic development you have around the town, it's about another 700 acres, so 1,458 acres surrounding a town of 2,100 acres slated for future growth. Route 3, ag-zoned acres scheduled for economic development, that equals 2,100, and that's a conservative estimate, and that's with the most recent approval Signature Station, which took another couple hundred acres and moved it towards commercial and residential growth. I remember at that hearing, we actually had a real estate agent stand up. They were the first speaker, never met him before, definitely not someone I knew, but she said something. She said, "You know, there are a lot of people trying to sell their homes or trying to retain the value of their homes on the Route 3 corridor. When we have 1,700 approved and unbuilt units on Route 3," and that is a conservative estimate, "and we have plenty more vacancies as well, what is this plan going to do for the value of everybody's home on that corridor, or much less the entire county? Ag acres contained in villages, just agriculturally zoned acres contained in the village designation, 1,060 acres. How much do we need for a 20-year comp plan? A2, talking about ag districts, A2 allows for undesirable uses, commercial, residential, captures land that's not appropriate, I mean, that more appropriately belong in A1 parcels greater than 20 acres. Why do we even have two ag districts? To me, it's either ag, or it's not ag. It's either residential, it's not residential. Maybe we need to think about more A2 going into A1. I'll end with this statement. Public comment is not the same as public involvement, and that's been demonstrated here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Next speaker is Alice Muller, 14190 Blue Ridge Turnpike.
Good evening. I also just wanted to thank you all for your service to our county. We do appreciate it, although it doesn't sound like it so much tonight. I do want to say I'm opposed to the existing proposed 2013 comprehensive plan, and I agree with previous speakers about the lack of public input. I have to say, I'm a recent resident. We just moved here. We've been, my husband and I have been in the county by a year and a half. Maybe I'm missing something. I guess there's some people here that feel like there's been a lot of opportunity for public input, other than the May and August meetings where we got three minutes. That's the only time I was aware that we could get involved in this comprehensive plan, and it's something that means a lot to myself and to my husband. I just want to say for myself and possibly for some other speakers, one of the reasons why we're really concerned is most of us have moved from other counties where there's been very bad planning, and I know the county I grew up in, the result of that was a four-lane bypass through beautiful farmland. The area it bypassed, those stores with that traffic moved, most of them now are empty. It's a huge drag on that county. It did nothing for, letting that initial development came in, backfired. It's now an eyesore, and it has not improved that county. It has not helped the residents, it has not reduced their taxes, and that was just a lack of insight on the part of the county 20 years ago when they were developing a plan, and you have to think that far out. You know, targeted growth is fantastic. Indiscriminate growth leads to bigger problems. Other people have mentioned them, roads, water, infrastructure. These are huge things that we have to consider. And I also just want to say that my husband and I, and I think other people in this room, are here and speaking because we love this county. Orange County is beautiful. We love living here. We love it the way it is, and we just really would like it to stay as much as possible that way. Growth is great, but don't take our roads, make them four lanes, put in commercial development right next to our house. We live on a small farm. It is a residential farm, but it's a farm. We don't want commercial next door. We don't want a subdivision next door. We love looking at the other farms in our neighborhood. That's why we're here. It's not because we don't like you all or we're just want to be difficult. We are here because we love this county, and we feel like this plan that has been presented to you all is not to the advantage of this county, it's to the detriment of this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rezzy Connell, 24195 Independence Road.
Hi, my name's Rezzy Connell, and I live in Unionville on a 60-acre farm. I had a lot of choices when I moved to this county in 2000, but when I moved here, I could not imagine raising my children and a family anywhere other than this beautiful county. The proposed changes to this plan don't support my choice. I agree with what the others are saying. Loss of agricultural land in this county is going to remove much of the character that makes this county unique, just like others have been saying. Increased residential does not increase the tax base enough to cover the cost incurred, and our public school system is suffering terribly, along with our fire and other responses. I don't know if any of you live out in the other, outside areas of the counties, it's even getting more and more difficult to get insurance. When I moved to my new farm, I had a, I had a hard, hard time finding insurance because I was too far away from a firehouse, too far away from public water sources. So this is already a problem. We do need more businesses in Orange. That's a tax, a tax base that would be helpful, and there is plenty of land in the current plan, plenty of land that has been abandoned or is not being used that businesses can go in, that we could be attracting to. We have, we have a beautiful county here, and like a lot of other people are saying, it's a great resource, and it makes us stand out around, between Culpeper and Frederick, Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania, and all the growth and crazy stuff that's moving in around us, this is, this is a destination area now. I ask that you vote no to this plan as it stands, and that you work with the citizens to update the current plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara Colbert, 14201 Cox Mill Road.
Good evening. I'm opposed to the plan as written, and I recommend that you return to the drawing board on this one. I do have a couple comments I'd like to make, because this may be my only chance. On page 21, Objective G, "Serve the parks and recreational needs of county residents." I'd like to request that you add a plan to build an agricultural events center in Orange County to promote agricultural education and industry, as well as agribusiness and agritourism. On page 22, in the section on trails, please add equines to the list of non-motorized trail uses. It's easy to kick horses off the trails if we're not specified. On page 24, with regards to the definition of A2, the three uses defined in A2 are residential development, commercial uses, and public services. I grew up in Ohio in the corn and hog land, and I would expect that agricultural land would include things like types of crops, livestock, horticulture, horse farms, truck farms, agritourism. So I would please reconsider that definition, and I don't think that houses should be the number-one crop in A2. On page 26, I have a concern about the bullet on major and minor named subdivisions with private streets connecting with public roadways. Roads are expensive to build and maintain. My concern is that if neighborhood roads are not built to standards to assure public safety, the need for the upgrades will eventually surface. The builder, developer will be finished with the project, and the county citizens will be responsible for the costs that will fall upon us. I think this is but one of the costs that we will see with increased development that may increase our taxes. To conclude, I hope that the Board of Supervisors will work with the Planning Commission to develop a plan that will encourage entrepreneurship and reinvigorate the agricultural sector of the Orange County economy to truly support a rural community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sally Pomphret, 16253 Marquee Road.
Hi. I'm Sally Pomphret, and I live at 16253 Marquee Road. We moved here 28 years ago from Connecticut to live in a rural county, and after a lot of research, we bought over 100 acres in Orange because of its rural benefits. We didn't move here to have a subdivision surrounding our farm, and I wonder if these rezoning efforts are for personal gain rather than in the interests of its residents, and I am opposing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Suzanne Bromfield, 7085 Constitution Highway.
I'll make mine brief. I agree with the speakers that have eloquently spoken prior to me. I'm against the new plan, and I like the old plan, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Terry Lor, 24073 Monrovia Road.
My issue is with the A2. With the word residential on my property comes nothing but more restrictions. Now, I don't understand how you could possibly put the word residential on my little piece of property when people are allowed to run hunting dogs 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And that, if you want to put the word on residential on my property, great, ban hunting with dogs in the county. And if you want to put the word residential on my piece of property, then every piece of property in this county that's zoned A, that has a dwelling on it, do it to all of them, because the word residential just brings more restrictions to me. I'm surrounded by farmland, and as soon as you get the word residential on my property, next comes crazy noise, like was tried to adopt it a couple of years back. Now, farmers can farm 24 hours a day anytime they want. That's fine. That's cool. Don't restrict me. That's all I'm saying. The plan that you have now, it's been working, I guess. Sounds to me that this board is supposed to reflect the public opinion. Sounds to me like y'all don't have much choice, because the public opinion is definitely against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Henry Horner, Jr., from Orange, Virginia.
Good evening. Henry Horner, 14400 Cox Mill Road, Gordonsville, Virginia. I am here tonight to support the widening and folding of Route 20 between the town of Orange and Route 3. For years, we've been put, we have put off trying to make this road safer. It is one of the most dangerous roads in the county. Most of our schools are aligned on this road. We have so much bus traffic there. If we do not do anything, if we've done something today, it would take 20 years to get this road through. I say we start now, in support of our kids, the schools. You can ask any of the bus drivers that have to drive that route. It's dangerous. Now, some people might think that, hey, we opened a gateway to Northern Virginia. The road has been there, okay? And to make the road safer has nothing to do with that. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Suzanne Brazee from the town of Orange.
Brazee.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. First of all, I don't have a plan in terms of, I didn't go, you know, word by word over the plan, but I do know that five years ago, it was more than that, 2009, we worked hard to come up with a comprehensive plan. It's really a good comprehensive. It's really a good comprehensive plan. Now, when you review it, I'm sure there's some tweaks and small things that need to be done, but a total revision like this is really unnecessary. And what's happened since the last plan? The tourism industry is an industry in this town now, in this county. We are a destination place. Many people are employed in the tourism industry. And I really think that you should look at that very clearly and preserve why people want to come here and spend their dollars. And then, they occur, for us, houses need more taxes, tourist money is really money, it's gravy money. And we really, I have a location which really appreciates that. Don't ruin that, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Penn Brisey.
Brisey.
Brisey. From the town of Orange.
I grew up with them, I know, so.
I want to applaud all of you all. I cannot do nearly as well, but I'm really impressed with you. Thank you very much.
I have to say that I'm opposed to this new comprehensive plan also. Most of my 82 years, I've lived in Orange, or in the county. When I met my wife in West Africa, we had a choice of where to go. Come to Orange or anywhere else in the world. We selected to come back here. We've been now in our same place for 45 years. And I got from your father and Jack Samuels, a lot of acreage around our house, and what did we do? We put it into a scenic easement. We could have made lots of money on developing it. It was already developed and quarter acre lots around us. We have an easement around it. We have some nice land. We only raise hay on it right now. That's all I have to say, and thank you very much. Think about it.
Thank you, Penn.
Next speaker is Tom Payatt, Rappahanna, Virginia.
Payatt.
My name is Tom Payatt. I'm in Orange County. We moved here, my family did, in 1963. I oppose this plan and would like you all to vote against it. I think the old plan can work until we can fill a room full of people that support a new plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker is Merrill Strange, Gordonsville, Virginia.
Hi, I'm Merrill Strange from Gordonsville. And I oppose this plan. I think that it's ambiguous, and it leaves too much room for development with the scattered development clause in your A2. Anyway, I think you should sort of stick with the old plan until you get enough information and input from your constituency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jason Capel, 6315 Spotswood Trail.
Hello, Jason Capel. I just want to, first of all, thank you, all five of you, and supporting staff as well. I know you get paid a lot of money for this, and I really appreciate it. But I have to tell you, you've done a really good job of creating a plan that almost no one likes. Sorry, it has to be said. I mean, it's kind of what I'm seeing here. A quick comment on Route 20. I mean, there's obviously some safety issues on Route 20. Fore laning it is not the only way to fix the safety issues, okay? I mean, there's more options. So let's think outside of the box a little bit. We don't have to fore lane it. Two other things. I'd like to see a rural historic district, or a historic overlay over the Madison Barber Rural Historic District. Mentioned that before. Don't see anything like that, although I do appreciate the A1. Also, I'm really disappointed with the encouragement of residential growth, particularly in the A2, especially when you guys know it's a loser. I mean, you know it's a loser. I mean, look at the evidence. Every populated county has higher taxes, bigger governments, less property rights. I mean, what are we missing here? Last thing I'm going to say, I'm going to tell you one thing I like about the plan, and Mr. Goodwin, I'm going to assume you're responsible for this. I'm looking at the photos here. You've got two photos from District 1. I'm really proud of that, because we fought really hard in District 1. Personally, we've given up a lot, a lot of our time, a lot of our family's time. And I want to thank you personally for putting those two District 1 photos up there. I'm not sure you could have been able to do it if some of the things that were proposed in District 1 actually went through. A lot of money coming out of District 1. So I ask you to do something different here. This is not a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Next speaker is Ann Snyder, 12574 Chicken Mountain Road.
Good evening. I am here to oppose the proposed comprehensive plan. You say you want to preserve the rural character of Orange County. This revision does not do that. You need to support and promote agriculture and tourism, not building more houses. Agriculture is already the most important industry in the county. Orange is seventh out of 99 counties in the Commonwealth of Virginia. In addition, there are over 2,000 platted building lots in the county. Houses cost the county more than the revenue they generate, so taxes will rise to cover the increased cost of schools and other services such as police and fire protection. In contrast, agriculture provides more tax revenue than the services to support it. I urge you to vote against this disastrous comprehensive plan revision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Steve Satterfield, 21041 Clark's Mountain Road.
Good evening. A lot of time has been spent on the plan, certainly, by you all, Planning Commission, members of the public, but it's not ready to approve, in my opinion. There've been several versions, somebody said seven. They all take time to read and study, even if you only read them once, and some of them require reading more than once. A lot of issues. I think the stated vision is desirable, but I don't think the plan will achieve any reasonable interpretation of any part of that stated vision. People have pointed out, and I think it's really ironic, that documents presenting and promoting the county typically include photographs of our beautiful countryside and outstanding historical sites. That is very appropriate. That is who we are, and it's who most of us want to continue to be. Yet the plan appears to threaten what most of us hold most dear. There are no clear approaches in the plan for sustaining the rural characters of the county. There's no ordinance in place that manages the division of agriculture land and conversion of residential use. There's been no sense of urgency since that went out of our ordinance, and there's a gaping hole there. There's no guidelines set forth in the plan for addressing this situation. Recent zoning actions make the county less rural and are hard to construe as improving the quality of life for all citizens. Are these actions harbingers of what this plan will bring us in the future? I might also put out, this ag conservation has been in the comprehensive plan for years. I think it's been in more than one iteration plan. Never been an ordinance to implement it. So not much protection there unless there's some dedication to carrying this out. The plan is rife with ambiguous language, disclaimers, undefined terms, references to other documents that are not even summarized. And many of those documents have a lot of issues themselves. I think, basically, we need to go back to the drawing board, as has been suggested here. I think we need to define what the vision statement really means and how we really will accomplish that, and how trade-offs will be decided. I think we've got lots of things we need to do on the future land map. I think we need to drop the village classification. I don't see where it serves any useful purpose. We need to scale back on areas for economic development. We need not to add potential for residential development. We've got existing rights all over the county. I think we need to put most of the ag land in A1, if not all of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Next speaker is Terry Pace, 25485 Gooch Lane.
Terry Pace, Unionville. I think that this plan is a blatant and defiant action to destroy the agricultural industry in Orange County and destroy our quality of life. If this plan, if you approve this plan, and as described in Ag 2, 108,000 acres, which is a catch-all for anything goes, the people that live in this county will no longer recognize the place that they live, that they cherish, that they call home, that they make their living, and they will all move out. And you can ask people that have moved here because they lost what Prince William used to look like. That was an agricultural community. Stafford was an agricultural community. Fairfax was an agricultural community. Now, the interesting thing about those places is they're a lot closer to DC. So they're within a commuting distance that is livable. Orange County is not. It doesn't matter how hard you try to work that ball, an hour and a half commute in bumper-to-bumper traffic, which makes your commute three hours one way, there, and so six hours in a day, is not. There's no reason or excuse to destroy this active and very vibrant agricultural community. And that's what this plan does. If, Chairman, you told me that you wanted your map, your land use map, to represent what was on the ground, and I said, well, that's fine, that's reasonable, then you, anything that is greater than 20 acres is viable agricultural land. Leave that Ag 1. Anything 19 acres or less, name it Ag 2. Don't take 108,000 acres of productive farmland and call it the catch-all, Ag 2, anything goes. We know what your idea for Orange County is. We've seen it in the last two rezonings. Signature station with no standards, so you just took all those people's property in Somerset Farm and reduced it and their quality of life by putting housing that we don't need with no standards. And then we have the rezoning of Commercial 2 right at the intersection of 601 and 20, so we can have a 100-foot building? How does that fit into Orange? And no standards. So we know what you're going to do. There's, it's not, we're not sitting back here wondering. This destroys our livelihoods and our quality of life. Spotsylvania's taxes are 88 cents. Ours are 72. Culpepper's are 83. So all that diversity of the tax rate didn't do them any good. It just destroyed their quality of life and their livelihoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is David Perdue, 9161 Liberty Mills Road.
Thank you for your service. I'm David Perdue, 9161 Liberty Mills Road. Thank you for your service to Orange County. You have followed the law and reviewed the comprehensive plan as required. You have a revision being considered tonight that contains significant changes from the 2009 comp plan. You had the chance to review, to accept that review process and decide to keep, decide to keep the 2009 comp plan as it was written. I urge you to do just that. This revision came to the public as a completed draft. There was little, if any, public input until the Planning Commission brought it to the public hearings. The 2009 comp plan, as we have heard so many times tonight, had enormous public input. This is the third public hearing I've attended. I would guess there've been a ratio of 10 speakers against this plan to one in favor, but as I think more about it tonight, I think the number's closer to 20 to 1, and maybe 30 to 1, and maybe 40 to 1. I could hardly call it anything like a vocal minority. These revisions, and I've said this before to the Planning Commission, lower the bar. Please take the opportunity to keep to 2009 plan. Look to the recent successes since that time in our county. You have the opportunity to take that and raise the bar. Thank you. I will also say one other thing. My wife, who is going to be the next speaker, had to leave to go home to our children, so I'm going to take her comment.
Thank you, David.
Next speaker will be Steve Yelton, Barbersville, Virginia.
Good evening. I'm glad we have such a large turnout tonight, even though it represents less than 1/10 of the population of Orange County. Before I comment on the comprehensive plan, I would like to address comments directed at me during the Planning Commission hearing. I'd say that conservation easements had cost the county and taxpayers more than any developer ever has. In response, another attendee brought up various tax breaks he seemed to think I would agree with. In fact, I do not agree with any tax breaks for any one. The free market needs to decide winners and losers, not the government. It is a height of arrogance for one to think they know what's best for future generations when they put their land in conservation easements and stick the current taxpayer with the bill. Now to the comprehensive plan, I would like to address some of the concerns I have heard at the two planning meetings, none of which involve the lack of public input. It's like we've got minor birds in here tonight. The idea that development would cause Orange County to devolve into Northern Virginia is ludicrous. The growth in Northern Virginia is a direct result of the growth in the size of the federal government. For those of you who have voted for the party of big government, you only need to look in the mirror to see who is responsible for the mess in Northern Virginia. Unless the government decides to move the capital to the town of Orange, there is no way Orange County will ever be like Northern Virginia. Now, let's discuss farming in Orange County. According to the latest USDA census, there were 518 farms in Orange County. Of those 518 farms, 207, or 42%, had sales of less than $2,500. Let me repeat that. 217 farms, or 42% of the total farms, had sales of less than $2,500. Not income, but sales. Only 67, or 13%, had sales of $50,000 plus for the year. So some want to preserve all this land for 67 people. Seems to me that anyone who can make a living farming in Orange County is already doing so, all 67 of them. New rooftops increase everyone's taxes. If this is true, then the reverse must be true. Fewer rooftops lower everyone's taxes. I would invite those who believe rooftops increase taxes to be part of the solution and move your house somewhere else. As for the statement that there were 2,000 undeveloped lots in Orange County, as I've said before, there should be 20,000 undeveloped lots, and as these lots pay 20 times the amount of taxes that the land, either land use or conservation easements. The real issue is why are there 2,000 undeveloped lots in Orange County? You would think that someone who's looking to build a house in Orange County would probably have enough options with 2,000 lots available. The bottom line is that people are not looking to build in Orange County. And until the county becomes a more desirable place for people to live and work, you will continue to have 2,000 undeveloped lots. I think this comprehensive plan has stepped the right direction for creating that desirability.
Thank you, Steve. Next figure.
Next speaker is Dan Gregg. Affiliated with Grellin Nursery.
Good evening. My name is Dan Gregg. I am a resident of Albemarle County, but I am a property owner and business owner in Somerset, Virginia. I own, or co-own, and am the president of Grellin Nursery. We recently opened a farm market and destination venue for events in the Somerset area. What I'd like to discuss this evening real quickly is the fact that the clients that are coming to us are telling us they love the open space that Orange County provides, that they love the experience of leaving the cities and coming to the market at Grellin, coming to Bon Pelear, coming to Barbersville Vineyards, and they all say that Orange County is beautiful. They tell their neighbors, they tell their friends, they tell their families. They tell their neighbors, they tell their friends, they tell their families. And I'm telling you, a week later, those friends, those families, and those families or those families and neighbors are coming to the market and telling us, "We heard how beautiful it's out here." The Ag 2 designation is what bothers me most about this plan. Ag 2 allows, if you look at the map, which is not up on the screen, but if you look at the map, it looks yellow. That is Ag 2, the yellow part of the map. It is along most of the roads. Those roads can be developed based on what Ag 2 has described. They can be developed commercially with strip shopping centers. They can have small repair shops. They can have pizzerias. That is not rural. That is not sustaining the rural characteristics of this county. Your view, your mission states that you're trying to preserve the rural character of this county. If you want that, you need to change this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Next speaker is Victor King, 15278 Cox Mill Road.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, along Route 20, Unionville Village and Locust Grove Village, these areas have the indications and characteristics to support a village and future growth. I ask you to expand Unionville Village east to Village Feed at BB Farm and Locust Grove Village east to Flat Run Road. These areas presently have small businesses and houses and should be given the opportunity to follow their inclination to grow and serve Orange County and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
Next speaker is Marcia Lando, 14165 Marquee Road.
I haven't been to a hearing in a long time, and I have to say, I'm really proud of the people in this community. I'm really proud that they're my neighbors and my friends. I think they're incredibly smart and eloquent and articulate, and I hope you guys listen. I oppose the plan totally.
Thank you, Marcia.
Next speaker is Melissa Zeller, 8398 Webb Road.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Zeller, and I'm here to oppose the adoption of the proposed comprehensive plan. Like many have stated before me, the comprehensive plan should preserve the rural character of the county and benefit its citizens, and the proposed revision does exactly the opposite. A plan that permits widespread development along Routes 15, 20, and 3, and requires the expansion of existing services is a blueprint for sprawl. Implementation of the plan would destroy the rural beauty of the county, harm its existing agritourism business, and would only benefit a small few who would presumably take their money and leave the rest of us to pay with increased taxes, decreased property value, loss of quality of life, and increased traffic. There are many other counties that have to spend a lot of time and resources trying to alleviate terrible traffic problems that have been created by poor planning. I have lived in some of those counties, and I don't know if any of you all have lived in a place that is afflicted with terrible traffic, but I'm here to tell you that it is a bad problem. It impacts your life in a very real and very bad way every day. It's, once you've created that problem, you really can't fix it. And I'm asking you, please don't bring that problem here to Orange County. Please do not adopt the revision to the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rob Patera, 10155 Rapidan Road.
Good evening. I'll be brief. I was part of the 2009 comprehensive plan. It was easy to go to meetings before things were started. I had lots and lots of input. The 2009 plan is a comprehensive plan. This current plan is not.
Thank you, Rob.
Next speaker is Eden Patera, 10155 Rapidan Road.
Ellen Patera, Rapidan Road. I just want to say I really appreciate all of y'all's commitment to service here in Orange County. I sincerely do. However, I completely disagree with your plan, and I hope that you take everyone's advice here in getting input from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Next speaker is George Yancy, 16170 Cox Mill Road.
Thank you very much, George Yancy, 16170 Cox Mill Road. I'd like to thank the neighborhood because we've had a lot of representation, if you remember the name, Cox Mill Road. Thank each and every one of you for your service to our county and to our citizens. With that said, I want to remind you of some numbers that I think you already know. Number one, 1% of our land is currently zoned either industrial or commercial. 63% of our land is either in land use or conservation easement. 75% of our workforce commutes outside of our county at this time for gainful employment. Our county budget barely covers the basic service levels with no future investment needs being called upon. You had the foresight in the last couple of budget sessions to not dip into the till like some of our past supervisors. It was the first time since 2005 that we did not go into our reserves to fund operating costs of the county. 46% of our students are either being furnished a free or reduced lunch at our public school system. One-third of our households has a member that's 65 years or older. Orange County is listed by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership as an economically distressed area. I remind you of that. I also want to remind you of some things you're gonna be facing in the next year or so. You're being faced and called to look at the reopening of a school and the annual operating costs that go with that. We have a local volunteer fire company that's in the need of a pumper up in Barbersville. You're looking at the replacement, no less than possibly as many as four EMS units at the rescue squad. That's a lot of money, ladies and gentlemen. Law enforcement needs replacement of an extensive amount of vehicles. There's additional funding for retirement for county teachers and employees that are gonna be called upon for you to fund by the state, and you're gonna be required to fund it. Two, a water impoundment is needed. I came here in, to Orange County in 1947. I came from the distinction of coming from the maternity ward at the University of Virginia Hospital. I've been here all those years except for 10. So I've seen a lot in those 65-plus years. Lastly, you're also gonna be looking at mandates being, coming down from the state, mandates coming down through the federal government that you're gonna be faced to fund. The last thing I would like to say to you, I appreciate and honor and respect the people that have spoken here tonight. However, the silent majority has not spoken and has not been fully representative to you, and I implore you to remember them in your consideration and your deliberations on the comprehensive plan.
That's your time, George. That's your time, George.
Thank you.
Next speaker is, our speakers are Teddy and Emily Grannan.
Good evening. I'm Teddy Grannan. We're doing this together. We live in Somerset, 13121. We just arrived here. We just got here last year, and I am merely echoing some earlier statements, but we had an opportunity after a young man knocked on our door. He wanted to buy our house in Los Angeles. We had flirted with a lot of different places across the country, many places, and it wasn't until we drove down Route 3, took a left on 20, came into your all's town, which I had never been to before. I'd never visited. I'd heard about it from Emily when we were dating a long time ago and had brought it up during our house hunting and process. I said, "What about that place you used to talk about when you were a little girl?" We came down the road, came into Orange, met a couple of people, and we found a house, and a year later we moved into it. I don't have much knowledge of all the changes that are going under, but I do know one thing. You guys have a really, we have a really special place here, and we love it. We're very glad to be here.
I'm standing here to agree with a lot of the people who've spoken already, and just yesterday we came in from DC. We were visiting people, and I felt, you can feel how different you feel the closer you get to this area and how peaceful it is. And I encourage you to concentrate your development strategy on the town, and with such, Orange is, all these towns are just special little places, and I feel like they're in need of your attention, not the farm, not the farms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Marcia Hovindin, 1111 Lakeview Parkway.
My name is Marcia Hovindin. I'm from Locust Grove, Virginia. My husband and I are opposed to the 2013 comprehensive plan. We moved to Locust Grove, Virginia in 2006 because it is rural and beautiful. It's Fredericksburg area sprawl what Orange County wants. Sprawl-inducing plans lead to tax increases along with the loss of scenic beauty and rural character. Sprawling Grove puts a huge burden on county transportation, infrastructure, and services such as schools, sewer, and water. Agricultural areas should not be open to spot commercial and suburban housing. If we lose the farmlands, then we will lose the farmers that grow the food for the stores, then where are we to go and buy our food? Plans for scattered development along Route 20, Route 15, and Route 3 will make things worse for everyone. The plan now calls for Route 20 to be foreland from the town of Orange to Route 3 and reline through the wilderness battlefield, a large expense and a threat to the park. This new comprehensive plan seems to be a plan to recruit residential growth at great cost to existing residents rather than accommodate the natural growth the county is likely to experience. To make matters worse, the county plans to offset the cost of this residential growth by chasing development. The ill-conceived I-95 to Orange bypass would be a developer's dream but a nightmare for Orange County. No county has other grown its way to lower taxes. If you want lots of growth and high taxes, go live in Fairfax County. Let's keep Orange County rural and beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is James Collins, 12384 Marywood Drive.
Hi. My name is Jim Collins. I live at 12384 Marywood Drive in Somerset, and thank you for letting me speak, and I want to echo everyone else who says thank you for serving and doing the work you do. I have, I think, three points to make. First, I think that the 2009 plan is, as others have said, is a very good plan. I'm not sure why there's a move to change it, and I could not find in the current plan actually any explanation for why the changes that are being made. There's nothing that discusses what has happened in Orange County that requires that the plan from 2009 be so thoroughly revised. I don't see any argument for why this is, why this has happened. So that is one thing that I just, I just don't get, and I don't see where the argument is for why the 2009 plan is not still adequate. Secondly, in the 2009 plan, the description of agriculture, which is sort of the equivalent of the A2 designation in the new plan, is three pages long, and there are 24 bullet points, and as far as I can tell, oh, they're lettered, but they're points. 23 of them describe ways in which you can, to preserve the agricultural character of that designation. A2 is less than one page. There are four bullet points, all of which relate to commercial and residential use. If Mr. Zodi, as he said, points out that the description indicates that the rural character of that area will be retained of A2, why are the 23 ways of retaining that character not in the current plan? They're all laid out in very specific detail in the earlier plan, but they're all gone in the new plan. If you want to retain the rural character, why not use the methods that have already been identified in the earlier plan? Finally, I want to just address what Mr. Yancy said. What is the best way to get those children off breakfast? What is the best way to help the people of Orange County have adequate work and have the adequate taxes to pay what we need? Is the best way to have rooftops and have people paying less in tax if they're using in services? Is that the right way? Where does this plan address exactly what Mr. Yancy was talking about? The problems that people have and how to solve them? It does not actually answer the problems that Mr. Yancy mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Next speaker is Virginia Donaldson, 12384 Marywood Drive.
I'm Virginia Donaldson, 12384 Marywood Drive, and I oppose the proposed 2013 comprehensive plan. I think the 2009 plan proposed everything that we need in this county. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Virginia.
Next speaker is Anthony Petralia, 28236 Sunnyside Road.
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm on the Orange County Farm Bureau. I came from Long Island, New York. There is sprawl there. If anybody would like to take a ride with me, I'd be glad to drive you up there. I would like to show you empty strip malls all along the main roads going east and west on Long Island. I don't think this is a good plan. What you had before, I did, I was against it originally, to be perfectly honest with you, but this is a nice rural community, and I think we should keep this county away. So I do oppose the plan, and I hope to God that you people, listen to some of the people tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Don Skelly, 14184 Brookman Road.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of you for your service to the county, and I'd also like to thank the citizens for coming out and participating in this great democracy that we've inherited. What I see when I look at this plan is truly the embodiment of the big lie, and we've heard the big lie time and time again in localities throughout our Commonwealth. And that lie is that somehow we can grow our way as fringe counties on the outskirts of major metropolitan areas into lower taxes, into more jobs, into better schools. And I would ask you to look at the citizenry in places like Warren County, in places like Culpepper, in places like Spotsylvania, and ask the citizens there, are their taxes lower? Are their kids not going to school in trailers instead of proper school buildings? Are their funds not stretched to the limit as they try and address the needs for yet more schools, yet more roads, yet more water impoundments? There really is no truth to the fact that we can grow into a broader tax base, and that's particularly true in outlying counties where basically all a plan like this does is facilitate the building of new homes for people who will go to work in Fredericksburg and DC and Charlottesville and drop their demand for services on the rest of the taxpayers in Orange County. You know, the truth of the matter is that when the developer develops the farmland, he gets a check, and the rest of us get a bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ellen Wazell, 10377 Little Skyline Drive. Wessel, sorry.
Anyway, thank you, everybody, for the education that I've gotten tonight, and my statement is very simple, which is, thank goodness you're only required to review the comprehensive plan.
plan and not change it. I think if we can't do better, we can just leave it as it is and not go with the whatever plan that is currently contemplated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Betsy Brantley, 6086 Ridge Road.
Hey. I'm Betsy Brantley, 6086 Ridge Road. I am against the proposed comprehensive plan. We've been here before. We'll keep coming back as many times as you require us to come to talk to you about the beauty of the place where we live and how to preserve it and to live in a place that is extraordinary. It'd just be a lot easier if you would just listen to us the first time. Oh, and one other thing. I don't understand the reference to the silent majority. The people that are here are here because they're passionate and they care about this. I thought that is how our government is supposed to work. We are the vocal majority, and please hear us.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarah Soderberg, 6086 Ridge Road.
Hi. My name is Sarah Soderberg. I have grown up my full 22 years in Somerset, and I have come down from Vermont to vocalize the words of all of my neighbors and friends and who I'd like to call family to represent the future generation that would like to come back to a place that is as beautiful as I know it now. So please listen to the people that you love and have grown up with as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jack Snyder, 12574 Chicken Mountain Road.
The changes proposed in the comprehensive plan should be rejected. Our economic strength is agriculture, the primary source of tax revenue and economic activity in the county. Building houses on land subtracts from this strength. In fact, houses cost more to support than the tax revenue they generate. Our taxes will increase with this proposed comp plan. This is evident in counties around us like Spotsylvania who have encouraged housing development and, as a result, have higher tax rates compared to Orange. We don't see citizens moving from Orange to Northern Virginia. It's quite the opposite. This is a very attractive rural county. The new 2A designation will facilitate rezoning the land for housing and thereby increase its value. Since some supervisors own large parcels of land in the A-2 area, shouldn't they recuse themselves from voting on the plan revision? Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Next speaker is Monk Sanford, 14387 Kenwood Drive. Is he here?
Can you see Monk?
Huh?
Monk Sanford. Next speaker will be Philip Schmidt, then, 14238 Marquee Road.
Members, thank you for taking the time to hear us tonight. Thank you for your service. I know it's late. I'll be quick. You know, I have to say I'm really, really just dismayed that we're even having this conversation. I'm one of those people who purchased here in the 90s. I grew up in Prince William County when it looked just like this, and that was in the late 60s and 70s. And I'm amazed at the growth that Prince William County has enjoyed, and how many of you have not driven through Prince William County? It's just a cesspool anymore, and I loved, I loved, I loved it there as a boy. It was wonderful. You know, look around us. Look, I worked for Jim Govanidis, who was a council member in Fredericksburg, and I remember when they annexed parts of Spotsylvania and all of that stuff, and I would argue, he's no longer living, but I would argue that he's probably rolling in his grave looking at what they did in Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania in terms of growth in the last 15 years. It's said that history is doomed to repeat itself if we don't pay attention, and look at the counties around us. We are an oasis. It's as if we're about to spoil the great gift we have, which is not, you know, our booming economic infrastructure right now, but what's going to drive people here and people who will create business is the fact that this area is so unique and such a great opportunity for people who want something better. And what you're proposing tonight sadly is something worse, profoundly worse, and so I would encourage you all to do the right thing, and not only vote this down, but anybody who has any interest or benefit from voting for this should do the thing that integrity in public service calls for, which is to recuse yourself of even voting on anything that you would benefit from. You may legally be able to do it, but that doesn't mean morally you should. And so I thank you all again, and I hope that, you know, we can look forward to something better in the future. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Zach Burkett, Unionville, Virginia.
Who?
Zach Burkett.
Okay.
Who was that?
I don't know. I couldn't hear over the applause. I asked for people to refrain from. What's going on, Zach?
This plan is counterproductive to the vision statement. Turning Orange into Spotsylvania will neither sustain the rural character or enhance our quality of life. Come on, it's a good plan if you want to sell out and get out, but for those of us who want to stay here, it sucks. Thank you.
Next speaker is David Heil, 13488 Brookman Road.
Is that with a CKS or an X?
Still speaking American, I see.
I am David Heil, 13488 Brookman Road, and I tell you, these meetings are great fodder. I feel like a skinny spear that's been left out of his pasture for about a month. There's just so much to talk about. Board of Supervisors' final draft. I hope this isn't the final draft. Surely it's not the final draft. I don't want to pick on Teal or pick on Jim, but I want to just bring to y'all's attention a couple of comments y'all made when you ran for election. Jim, when you ran for election, and Teal, you ran for reelection, and this was the questionnaire from the Orange County Review, and in part, one of the questions that you answered, Teal, was, of course, the question was posed, why should someone vote for you, and you answered, "I am a responsive voice to anyone that approaches me for help." We've got a lot of people here tonight approaching you for help. I'm approaching you for help. Jim, there was a discussion about growth being a key issue, and you noted in your response, properly planning the use of relatively small amounts of land in the county can have a large payback in terms of jobs and tax revenue. This is not relatively small parts of land. This is thousands and thousands and thousands of acres. You went on to say, in response to what are the other pressing issues the county faces and how would you address them, you answered, "One of the most challenging steps is to develop a plan or vision for the future that can gain sufficient public support to become the basis for action." And you went on further to say, "If we want others to invest with us in our community, we must adhere to our plans and provide the confidence that there is a stable, predictable environment in which to conduct business." Gentlemen, with respect to those comments, I would ask you to stay true to what you mentioned two years ago. As far as this being the final draft, again, I hope not, but what we have to do really is change the culture about how we're doing subdivision ordinances or not, how we're doing comprehensive plans or not. The fact that all these people are here would indicate that there's some interest, yet there's others that say they weren't here. I've been to these things throughout the years. The last Planning Commission hearing, which was to vote on the comprehensive plan, 17 people spoke against it, two spoke in favor of it, several others were from Spotsylvania County, and there are several neutral. I don't know why people would come to a meeting when it's 17 opposed to a plan, two in favor of it, and the Planning Commission votes four to one anyway to pass it. That's a waste of time. Today, I don't know what the number's going to be, but it's about, what, 25, 30 to one, and if y'all approve it?
That's your time, David.
What's the point?
Thank you, David.
The last speaker that I have signed up is Jay Billy, 12256 Montford Road.
Good evening. I knitted a sweater back there.
We didn't need one up here.
One of you will get a nice Christmas present. I want to thank you for all your service. I know you put in a lot of hours, and a lot of hours that even the people behind me don't realize that you put in, so I really appreciate it, and I want to thank everybody behind me for speaking their mind tonight because I think it's a very important issue. I am Jay Billy, owner and operator of the Inn at Westwood Farm in Montford area, and I can tell you that all the visitors come here because of its rural nature, because it's not Fairfax County. It's not Montgomery County. It is not Northern Virginia. It's not congested, and when you drive into this county, you see open land and beautiful scenery, and that's why they come here, and that's why tourism works very well here, as well as the historical significance of the county as well as the wineries. So what we have here is extremely special and should be left unspoiled. I am not in favor of this plan, and I think you should go back to the old plan. The major problems are, you know, there's a lot of unclear language in it. This A-2 designation really scares me because from what I can see, going from Orange to Montpelier, you could also, you could have some auto repair shops and some inconvenience stores along the way, which I don't think would be very appealing to anyone. There are water issues, and, but where do we go from here? That's the thing. I think we should go back to the old plan, and I think we should create more energy in doing what we do best. I work for a gentleman who wrote a book called "Sore with Your Strengths." We have a lot of strengths in this county, and agriculture and tourism are a big part of it, and I think we should soar with those strengths and not try to do something that we're not, and we're not. This plan is trying to be something that we are just not, and I think you've heard from the people behind me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. What's the last?
I don't know.
Close the public hearing. Thank all of y'all for coming and speaking. Okay, discussion?
Well, we've heard a lot tonight. I've gotten a number of areas of specific wording in the plan that I think probably deserves a second look, and I suspect that we should take some time and deliberate on this before we hold a vote. I would move that we would consider this for a vote at, what's our next meeting?
November 13.
I'll have the meeting after that. How about the first meeting in December?
Grover isn't going to be at that meeting.
What's that?
Grover won't be at that meeting.
Okay. What's the next meeting we'll have a vote?
December 17.
December 17? I know we've already thrown some extra things at the next meeting.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. The motion is second. Any further discussion? That case roll call.
Mrs. Bass? Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Fane?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.